All right, good evening, everyone. It is past five, so we're going to go ahead and get started. I will call this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you will stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Dooley?
Here.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Schwartzman?
Here.
Thank you.
And next up, item 5.0, approving our agenda this evening. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion, is there a second to approve our agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, and we amended our agenda a little bit before the meeting, so that our student rep can give his report out and then head to a choir concert. Wonderful, all right, thank you, go ahead.
All right. Okay. Hi, everyone. In case you don't already know me, I'm Solly, the student representative. And due to a scheduling conflict with a choir concert, as already mentioned, I'm going to leave this meeting early. I think I'll be able to stay for like the first maybe forty-five minutes or so, but luckily, I can still give this speech. There are a couple things that I'd like to report on. First, school is really back in business now, and everything's back to how it was before Rake, but seemingly better. We've all adjusted, and school's doing really, really well. Students are loving the extra days off they have this year and are excited to be official and are excited to be a quarter of the way through the year in just a couple of days. We're looking forward to an amazing homecoming. Truly, students are really, really enjoying this year, and on behalf of the student body, I'd like to thank everybody who contributed to that. Moving on to another issue. Since our last meeting, I've spent a lot of time gauging the opinion of the student body on school resource officers, and I've probably talked to somewhere around a hundred students, and I've come up with two major conclusions about the average student's opinions on SROs. First, and most importantly, most students don't actually feel super, super strongly about the police officers themselves, and if anything, many students are in favor of the officers. The majority of students at the school recognize the problems that CHS has and the inability of the current system to solve these problems. Many students have had enough of well-known issues improving in small increments and yet never going away, resurfacing every few months, a constant phenomenon at the school that motivates students to tentatively support policies that could possibly fix these problems. During my previous report, I mentioned that the general opinion of the students at CHS has been cautious optimism, and this holds true for this meeting as well. People want their problems solved, and from my conversations, the average CHS student finds that SROs could be the solution to their problems. That being said, students, like the rest of the community, have some very, very serious concerns, one of which stands out among other ones. The most important issue in the mind of students is the fact that SROs will have guns, and that, most importantly, they actually haven't heard why. Every single student I talked to, without fail, said that if SROs were implemented, they'd prefer them without guns, and they'd feel more secure if they didn't have guns. But that's obviously not possible. And many students' opinions on SROs as a whole shifted from positive to negative after the fact that they would possess guns was made clear to them. This distaste for SROs having guns comes from, from my perception, two places. First, is a pretty simple feeling of insecurity that comes from the presence of weapons so openly presented in a school setting, a feeling that no matter how many security measures are put on the guns, will always exist. Students understand that this feeling isn't a logical one, but the idea that however unlikely it's possible for with one person's bad judgment to be killed in the transition from first to second period is terrifying for all students. And second, the fact that they don't actually understand the reason for why guns are needed for this entire project. Whenever I talk to people about SROs and guns, the question of, well, why do they need to have guns in the first place, always gets asked, and no student has ever been satisfied with the answer of because one line in the police uniform policy says so. They don't interpret that as a particularly cohesive answer. And because most people's number one issues about SROs are guns, which turns an otherwise pretty positive thing into something that most students find to be very negative, students just don't understand how like the guns are necessary. And this issue is possibly the hardest for the board to actually address, but as the representative, I'd advise a couple of things. First is to make extremely clear why the guns are needed and the actual justification for like the officers having them. Second, to make it again extremely clear that the police officers would not use the guns in any normal circumstance, and that that is something that they are trained to be doing. And that third, that there are pretty significant security measures in place to prevent people from stealing the guns. And along with the issue of guns, students have a couple other concerns, especially about possible SRO involvement with ICE and regularly and in regular disciplinary actions, but those problems seem easier to address because after like pretty simple conversations with the students and letting them know the information in the MOU, most of those concerns are cleared up pretty quickly. But it's always important to remember that despite these ideas that students have and the possible issues that they have with the policies, many students are still in favor of SROs overall. It's only, but they like, although their like for it is detracted from by guns, students still feel generally positive about that. So I hope that that report can help contextualize some things about the debate today or about SROs today. And thank you all for letting me attend this meeting, and we're extremely excited to be done with a quarter and for homecoming on Saturday, two Saturdays from now.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartzman, and I think some of your concerns may be addressed in one of our agenda items later this evening. Next up, we have 7.0. Ms. Cooper, your disclosure.
Ash Amora Cooper declared that I have a personal interest in a transaction of the Charlottesville City Public Schools for the reasons set forth below. I believe that I have, I may participate in deliberation and the voting on the transaction as permitted by the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112B1 and 2.2-31158. Specifically, the transaction in which I intend to participate in deliberation regarding the vote on the Charlottesville City School Board operating budget for the 2025 and 2025-2026 fiscal year, which includes pay to my daughter. My personal interest in this transaction stems from my daughter's employment by the Charlottesville City School Board as a safety care assistant. By the way, of my association with my daughter, I am a member of a group of three or more, all employed by the school board, the members of which are affected by the budget deliberations and approval. I, I am able to participate in the budget deliberations and vote fairly objectively in, in the public interest. I ask that this statement be maintained with the minutes of the Charlottesville City School Board. It is my intention to orally disclose the existence of the interest during the meeting of the Charlottesville City School Board in which the 2025-2026 operating budget is discussed and asks that each such disclosed be recorded in the prospective meeting minutes. This disclosure will be respected, reflected in the public record of the Clerk of School Board for five years.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Next up, we get to move on to some student and staff recognitions. So we start off with Ms. Rasnick, recognizing disability history and awareness month.
Members of the board, I am here to put forward three different acknowledgements tonight. Is it okay if I do all three together? Okay. So dyslexia awareness and disability history awareness month allows us the opportunity to celebrate the strengths of individuals with disabilities while taking an active role in creating a more inclusive and accessible environment. Schools will take opportunities to celebrate students and adults with disabilities. They'll be provided with age-appropriate books selected by our special education team leaders for use in classrooms. Teachers are selecting texts that will bring awareness to students without disabilities and allow students with disabilities to see themselves in literature. Additionally, materials are provided for public display. We're also acknowledging October as bullying prevention month. Our school counselors will take the lead in increasing awareness among students and staff to promote safer, kinder environments. Schools will celebrate with spirit days, but also through the thoughtful delivery of social emotional learning lessons. For each of these, our school administrators will receive resources to share with their staff each Friday in our instructional updates. I ask that you acknowledge October as dyslexia awareness month, disability history and awareness month, and bullying prevention month.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Chuck with our boys tennis recognition.
And I am inviting Athletic Director Andy Jones to come recognize our tennis stars.
Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Our lights are stars.
We'll figure it out.
We'll do, we'll do the stars, yeah. All right. Good evening. I'm thrilled to recognize a truly remarkable group of student athletes, the Charlottesville High School Boys Tennis Team, who have once again brought pride and excellence to our school and our community by winning their second consecutive state championship. With an outstanding 20-2 record on the season, this team has shown what happens when hard work, discipline, and team chemistry come together. They didn't just win, they dominated. Throughout the postseason, they played at an exceptionally high level, making a powerful statement with every match. In fact, they only had to go to doubles in one match, the state championship, a testament to just how commanding their performance was from start to finish. This level of consistence, consistent excellence doesn't happen without strong leadership, and we want to extend a heartfelt congratulations to head coach John Neal and assistant coach Peter Gunter. Your guidance, mentorship, and belief in these athletes have been central to this team's success, not just in the win column, but in their growth as competitors and young men. To our athletes, you have earned this moment. You have made CHS history. Winning one state championship is a tremendous accomplishment. Winning back-to-back titles puts you in a league of your own. You have shown what it means to represent Charlottesville High School with pride, determination, and sportsmanship. I'd like for you to come forward as I announce your name. George Aiden. Patrick Cassidy. Tomas Chow. Gray Douglas. Reed Douglas. Joaquin Albom. Sean Frank. Grant Gastinger. Kai Leonard. Asher Marini. T. Naby. Gino Park. Arlo Prey. Calvin Shulaw. Louis Vogelsang. Parker Riedel. Sidney Shulman. Coach John Neal. Coach Peter Gunter. And Coach Mark Illinger. And Harry Shulaw.
Am I on there?
No. Yeah, sorry, bud.
Guys, we're so proud of you. We are inspired by you, and we are grateful to be able to celebrate your success as a team and as champions once again. Congratulations again to the Charlottesville High School Boys Tennis Team, two-time state champions. All right, well, I have some other exciting news here. Tonight, we also want to take a moment to express deep gratitude on behalf of Charlottesville High School, our student athletes, and the broader community for our school board and Charlottesville City Schools, your unwavering support in bringing lights to the Curtis Elder Track and Field Complex. This project would not have been possible without the vision, voice, and financial commitment of the Charlottesville City Schools and this very school board. Your support has not only illuminated a track, it has brightened the opportunities available to our students and our community. With installation of these lights, the Curtis Elder Track and Field Complex can now be used during early mornings and well into the evenings. It will continue to serve as a hub for health, wellness, and community connection, well, at least until 10 o'clock at night when the lights get cut off. Again, thank you for your leadership in making this happen. We are also incredibly grateful to the generous community partners who have stepped forward and helped make this vision a reality. A few of them are here with us tonight. First, Flow Motors played a significant role, and we especially want to thank Jason Karenin, Bennett Acuff, and Laura Renninger for their enthusiastic and ongoing support. Jason and Bennett and Flow Motors have long been champions of CHS athletics, and their donation toward this lighting project was a substantial one that made a huge difference. We're also, we're proud to acknowledge and thank the Perry Foundation and Wade Tremblay. Being selected as a project worthy of their support truly gave us the momentum we needed to get this off the ground. We also want to acknowledge the Charlottesville Track Club. Thank you for once again showing how much you care about running and about Charlottesville. Your generous contribution and your passion played a crucial role. A heartfelt thanks goes to Mark and Cynthia Lorenzoni, Diane Rossin, and Tim Wendell for standing with us throughout this process. And lastly, but certainly not least, I want to thank our Black Knights Athletic Club, the parent volunteers who worked tirelessly behind the scenes to support our student athletes. This project took coordination, outreach, and dedication, and our BKAC rose to the occasion, especially Dan Zimmerman. Thank you for the countless hours you poured into this project. You were, you were a driving force behind the whole thing. Also, James Pierce, Raul Arbales, Mary Gentry, and the entire BKAC board. Your work, your commitment, and your love for our school made this possible. Because of this incredible team effort from our school leadership, city school board, community organizations, local businesses, and parent volunteers, Charlottesville High School now has a space where students can train, compete, and build memories no matter the hour of the day. It's a place that reflects the values of inclusion, activity, and community spirit. So from all of us, thank you. On Tuesday, October 21st, we're going to hold a ribbons ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Curtis Elder Track and Field Complex at 6:15, and we would, we hope that you all can join us. We're hoping to make that a big community event, so we look forward to seeing the lights on, the track filled with runners, and our community continuing to gather at the Curtis Elder Track and Field Complex for years to come. So thank you, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would love, sorry, and I would love for our, those that are here that I've mentioned, would love to have them come up and be recognized.
Yes, so if you're in Mr. Jones's remarks, please come.
Jason Karenin, Bennett Acuff, Laura Renninger, Wade Tremblay, if you're here. Any, any folks in the Charlottesville Track Club, and then obviously our BKAC members, please come on up.
All right, we get to continue on with some recognitions with our Piedmont Education Foundation grant winners.
Thank you. So we've gone from stars to lights, and now we're back to stars again. I just want to briefly recognize, we really had too many teachers to recognize fully in the way they deserve, but I just want to have two slides here of teachers who have recently won awards, fellowships, grants, things of that nature. You can see before you on this slide, the eight teachers who won the Public Education Foundation grants doing things ranging from environmental education to writing to soccer, just a whole bunch, a whole variety of ways that are really enriching our students' lives. Next slide, please. These are, I will read these by category. We have, again, onto fellowships. We have Fund for Teachers fellowships, National Center on Restorative Justice Scholarship, U.S. State Department Virtual Educator Program participants, and a brand-new fellowship that is helping Virginia celebrate the 250th anniversary just of the Declaration of Independence. So it's really just, just a huge array of ways that our teachers are making an impact, not only in our schools, but especially through the last one, it's schools throughout the state, and also in the third one, really, schools around the globe. So I just really want to thank our teachers who, again, just really go above and beyond. We appreciate everything they do during the school day, but this really reflects even a larger commitment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last category, I believe, I'm sorry, I'll wait for.
No, I was, yes, the Academy Awards.
The last category, I'm going to move quickly because we've had a lot of recognitions, but the last recognition is just to the people who are sitting on the dais, they put, recognizing the professional learning that you all have done to become better school board members for our community. And I just want to, on behalf of the community, I just want to say thank you for putting in not only the time of governance, but for the time of training to do governance well.
Thank you, Ms. Chuck.
Quick point of order. I noticed that at the top, we have info and action for the, excuse me, Disability History and Awareness Month.
Thank you, yes.
All right.
Okay, then let's backtrack, thank you, Mr. Morse. So for 8.1, our Disability History and Awareness Month, is there a motion to approve?
Since they were presented at the same time, can I do a motion for all three?
Let's go ahead and do them separately.
Okay, sounds great. I move to approve the Disability History and Awareness Month as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now a motion for Dyslexia Awareness Month.
I move to approve Dyslexia Awareness Month as presented to us earlier.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the Virginia School Board Association Bullying Prevention Month as presented as well.
I'll second that.
Wonderful, a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you, Mr. Morse, I got excited for all of the recognitions, so thanks for bringing us back to that. And now, we will move on to 9.0, our comments from members of the community. And now we will move on to 9.0, our comments from members of the community. If there are any students in the media center who wish to give comment, please feel free to approach the podium. Thank you, gentlemen. So if you can say your names for us and maybe what grade you're in before starting your comments, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Gabriel Dixon. I'm currently a student at CHS, and me and my partner are really leaning towards an idea of establishing an entrepreneur club, not just for ourselves, but ourself and others in the community as long with us. We would like to become a cessation for our own community and help people get out of their comfort zone, improve on their own skills, and just create a community. Every student is welcome. We want to have a lasting club for future success and inspire people to use their skill for their own personal benefit in their lives. The club will be, the club will bring pride and passion to CHS because it brings pride and passion to myself. We would like to have a long and lasting, successful club. Is there anything you want to add?
Hi, everyone. My name is Subhan Shafiki. I just want to add on what was said earlier by Gabe. Even if you don't have any experience, you're still more than welcome to join the Entrepreneur Club. These is a safe space where we all learn and grow together. We plan to meet every Wednesday after school for about an hour and 30 minutes. So, and our goal is to like help everybody be successful in what they want to do. And if you're, if you're like worried about starting, that's okay because that's what the club is for.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before you walk away, well, we will give you some applause because that is just outstanding.
Thank you.
And we're going to allow a little bit of discretion here. Ms. Torres said she had a question to ask.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. Thank you, Chair. So, gentlemen, I do want to, and I know that one of, at least one of the board members was actually present and heard you speak in front of city council this last week, and I was listening online, so I was very impressed and tried to text Ms. Burns to like make sure that, that they caught you or she caught you to follow up.
She said it.
Yeah, absolutely thrilled to see and hear you here, and I was wondering if you, and I don't mean to catch you by surprise, but can you share a little bit about what, what prompted this? So your experience?
Okay, so what prompted this is back in my freshman year, when I first started CHS, I was noticing there was a lot of other students, currently, they bring their product to school and sell it in school. There's just a whole lot of really, really small businesses, and they try to thrive at school. And I was more so leaning towards the fact that I can just make a place, a safe place for people to do that exact same thing just in the right way instead of doing it and bending the rules.
So, and did I hear you correctly? Maybe I was wrong. Did I hear you were part of the CAEP program as well?
Yes, I was part of the CAEP program for one summertime, but I was hired on as an actual worker, and I got a manager position at 16.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, so much. We're excited to see your club take off, so thank you for presenting. And now, unless there are other students who wish to give public comment? All right, so we'll move on to adult members of the community. Anybody in the media center who wishes to speak? Please come forward. I think I'll start with my list. I got Derek Hartline is my first in-person signup. So again, if you'll say your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Dr. Gurley. Derek Hartline, 1517 Antoinette, lifelong Suzy resident. I'm here this evening to discuss a couple of safety issues I feel are important and need attention. Next month will be the one-year anniversary of the vehicle fires at Jackson Villa. With the leaves starting to fall with the season, I'm asking that the city schools and either facilities or park and rec can start picking up the lot leaves earlier this year. Monday, November 3rd is a PD for staff, which will leave all lots empty at our school, so leaves can be picked up that day before elections. This will ensure that poll workers, voters, and community members are safe as no one wants a repeat of what happened last year. If leaves can be picked up on that day and possibly again on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break, I feel this will prevent the leaf buildup which led to last year's fire. Another safety concern I have has to do with the arrival and dismissal of Jackson Villa. With speed zone cameras at three schools currently, when would Jackson Villa be seeing cameras installed as it's in proximity of one of the most dangerous intersections in Charlottesville when drivers reach Fist Street when heading east on Harris? Today marks the 39th day of school. Each morning, I'm on duty opening the loop in front of Jackson Villa for bus arrival from 7:30 to 7:40. So for this year, I have seen zero police setting up radar to catch violators of the posted 15 mile an hour zone at arrival. In that 10 minutes each day, what I have seen is sometimes alarming and worth noting. So far this year, on two separate mornings, there have been car accidents at the intersection of Harris and Fist Street requiring emergency responses. On one particular morning, I witnessed three different drivers in a 10-minute period smoking drugs while driving down the street. We're not talking passenger, we're talking about drivers impairment in a school zone and also in a place where it's drug-free. On one day, a Hallmark County school bus was speeding because it was late picking up two Woodbrook Elementary students in front of Jackson Villa for some reason. When I inquired with the parent of the two children, she said that they had missed their stop and to have the bus meet them at the corner of Harris and Welk, even though it's not in the county. That bus had to be doing at least 45, 50 to pick them up. I realized it was late, but still unexcusable. On yet another day, a Charlottesville Fire Department official was heading west on Harris toward the Fontaine Firehouse, speeding, but wasn't on call as no lights or horn were being used. If a bus driver and a first responder won't follow the posted 15 mile an hour school zone flashing sign, how can we expect others to comply? It seems that if there isn't a camera to catch speeders, then this chronic speeding problem will continue. I'm interested in knowing the timeline for when more cameras will be installed. Last this evening, I want to thank HR for posting positions for substitute elementary teachers and substitute instructional assistants on 10-1. This is a real need this year, starting out for coverage as a position, as positions are open, as many staff have to fill in for when students, I mean, when teachers are out.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Do you have, can you wrap up in the next few seconds?
Sure, again.
Thank you.
Yep. Just want to say it's not sustainable, but I know that, you know, the middle and high school are getting paid a little bit more, so I hope that we can make it so that the elementary also gets what they need as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the media center who wishes to speak? Please approach the podium. If you'll say your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gabe Schneider, and I am, can you hear me? The parent of a fourth grader at Sunshine Elementary. Over the last year, I've had the opportunity to work with parents from all of the other PTOs in the city to help start the Charlottesville Citywide PTO Fund, which has officially launched in the last few days. While not all of the other parents that could be here tonight that I've worked with, I would like to call out Jill McKinley from Tall Oaks Elementary, who is here with me as well. While not news to likely anyone in this room, the reality in Charlottesville is that some schools, PTOs are able to raise large amounts of money, and others have significant trouble raising funds. To address this, we have created the Citywide PTO Fund. This group has been meeting and planning for roughly the last year or so to get this fund up and running, and we are excited to finally be able to provide support for all of our wonderful students and staff across the city. The Citywide PTO Fund aims to increase funding across the board at all Charlottesville schools while also attempting to improve equitable funding across those schools. We aim to do that by targeting corporate and philanthropic groups and also using a formula for fund distribution that takes into account the percentage of economically disadvantaged students compared to the average across all schools. We have created the fund at the Charlottesville Area Community Foundation to receive the funds and makes them tax-deductible, and we've also begun outreach to local and national companies and foundations so that we can help all cities, city students and staff. Our goal for our first year is $100,000, a figure that would greatly improve the resources of many PTOs who are currently not able to raise needed funds. And on the sort of non-tangible side of things, we are also more effectively building our community and providing a forum for PTOs and school communities to join together and leverage all of the talent and resources that our families and communities have. We do appreciate the support of the school board and the administration as we set out on this journey, particularly Chris Meyer, who has given us some background information on the previous fund, and we look forward to working and allowing all city schools to have the resources and support from their communities that they need. If you would like to learn more, we have a website that can be found at seavillecitywideptofund.org. You can also email us at charlottesvilleptofund@gmail.com. And I think I also provided you a couple of flyers and documents. One of them is for our first fundraiser kickoff, which is happening on Thursday, October 23rd at Random Row Brewing from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. A portion of all of the beer and food sales will go to the fund, and there will be live music with some of our parents who are more talented in that area. And the other document you have sort of gives a little bit more information about the fund. So just wanted to announce that we've started things, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabe, and to all the parents and community members that have been part of making this come together. Any other members of the public wishing to give comment? Come on down, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. Good to see you guys tonight. My name is Audrey Vet Aviles, 201 West Main Street. Sorry, guys, these microphones are always finicky. So I just wanted to make a quick announcement today that we, Charlottesville United for Public Education, are doing a collaborative event next Tuesday with Seaville Dems, and it is our school board candidate forum. So a quick sorry for having this like announcement delayed. We had a lot of trouble securing the location and then figuring out the logistics of the event itself. But it will be next Tuesday at the Jefferson School, starting at 6 o'clock. We will have all four candidates there, and we're looking forward to seeing as many of you as can make it. And that's it. Thank you.
Other members of the public wishing to give comment?
Good evening. Zionna Bryant, Charlottesville resident. So I have a couple of points regarding the school resource officers. So I've been to two of the community engagement sessions, info hours, and these are a couple of points that I've made note, note of. So it appears that there's been a misrepresentation of the survey data from the community during the discussion of your rationale behind bringing officers back into schools. Ms. Chuck has referenced repeatedly the 2024 survey that indicated most parents felt positive about SROs. This is this exact survey that, like I said, she continues to cite. However, I am not sure that has been publicly stated by Ms. Chuck or anyone that the actual question listed on the survey for respondents' interests is about learning more about the Cambridge model, which is not what the CCS draft MOU mirrors at all. And so it's misleading, and to continue to cite that, it's showing community support, and it's just, like I said, a misrepresentation of the data and what the respondents were actually asked to respond to. In the data that you have presented, the language from that survey is further exploring youth officers or youth resource officers, and that is not what this MOU is doing. So it's important to make these, these points publicly available to the community so that they understand how you shifted from that language to now writing a MOU. It's also important to note that only 29% of black respondents and 37% of Latinx respondents were a five. You had numbers of, you know, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And so, yes, of that 29% and 37%, there were only like a few fives essentially. Like, the only way that you're able to get your majority of these demographics being interested is by combining together the threes, the fours, and the fives. This is all important because, again, it makes it seem as if the data shows that these two demographics in particular are really supportive of this SRO model or this MOU process, and that was not what the data is showing. And so I'd like for those who are in charge of putting out that survey to make those clarifying statements. That would be great. I also think that it's important to note that at the two office hours or SRO info hours that I've been to, only a few school board candidates have been there, and I want to note that it's only been the women. So Mr. Morris and Mr. Meyer have not been present, and I think that sends a really loud statement to the community that the board is not awfully wanting to participate in the process or willing to hear from all sections of the community. And if you're only going to the meetings that are with the people that go to your kid's school or your friends, then you're not really listening to the entire community. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant? Other members of the community wishing to give comment? All right, seeing none, if we'll go to Zoom, if anybody wishes to give comment, raise your hand, and we'll promote you to speaker. All right, seeing none, we will move on to adoption of our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? I'll second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and point of privilege, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Gurley here for a moment to comment on one of items that just passed.
Ms. Dooley and members of the board, I want to thank you all for accepting my recommendation. This evening, I did make a recommendation on the personnel report to appoint Dr. Anna Isley as our chief academic officer. She has served us well in the interim, and I do believe that it's time for us to drop that and let her be, do the job fully. So thank you, Dr. Isley, for stepping into the role.
Yes, welcome, Ms. Isley. Welcome to the same place you've been, but we're happy to have you. We will move right along to item 12.0, since we did not poll any items from our consent agenda, so Ms. Hoover.
Good eve, good evening. Last month, the budget development calendar for the fiscal year 2627 was presented to the school board. Those dates that are with the city council have been finalized, so please note those on the calendar. Is there any questions or anything else?
If I may, I just wanted to draw attention that in, in the agenda and in the online too, that we, you did include the city's budget development calendar as well, which I appreciate. And I think it's important that, that those board members who can and the public try to attend or watch those meetings as well. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we do need to take action on this calendar, so may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Burns, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to 13.1, Dr. Trotter with an update on some alternative programming.
Good evening, school board chair Dooley, superintendent Gurley, and school board. Tonight, I'll be presenting on our alternative school education programs, our Lugo McGinnis and our night school, advanced please. Our strategic plan is aligned with target one, that we will maintain a graduation rate that is at or above the state average across all members, groups, and graduation rate. Target two establishes a baseline and increases family and student engagement. Strategy one enhances academic advertising tools and practices with a focus on equity and encouragement, of course, plans that include rigor, balance, Of course, plans that include rigor, balance and wellness within the school counseling department. And strategy two, alternative programs will continue to develop outside partnerships and collaboration with the Division of Equity and Inclusion. Advance, please. We're super excited to announce, it was no secret last year when we talked about the number of graduates that we wanted to complete. And we did successfully meet that target of 18 graduates. And those were students that were in that particular cohort. If you look here, those are who those students are, just a little information. Some of those students are currently working at FedEx. We have one particular student that's attending Virginia Union University. One particular student that is in collaboration with pipelines and pathways, working through the age back. And then one of our students that's not posted there works with the postal service. So we are closely monitoring those young people and just letting them know that the door is always open for them to come back to our community day. Please advance. So our instructional model is is outlined. We continue to use Edge Annuity as one of our platforms. And again, as mentioned before, that's definitely outlined through Mr. Grady and the math concepts that he instructs. We had an opportunity to share with one of our board members just exactly how Mr. Grady is able to flip his mind from Algebra I to geometry and so on. As we look at the applied learning opportunities, that's really just us being able to take our students off campus. You'll hear more in the presentation about the Real Money Real World opportunity that was presented as well as the Revive and Thrive. But I definitely would like to just take a moment and highlight how we were instrumental with attending the state fair and our students participated in the career expo and found that to be very rewarding. As we look at the pathways of courses, we continue to look at ways that we can continue to robust our engagement with the KTEC program, and I'll share more with that. And Dr. Isley and I are collaborating to work on ways that we can continue to find avenues for our electors, for our students as well. And so finally, the core instruction, we follow the same model as our high school counterparts. And so when students come to us, we align those courses exactly with the courses that they have here at the high school. Advance, please. So Lugo McGinnis, just very quickly, you can see our student enrollment is 29. And then you see the breakdown of that. We currently have 12 graduates that we are looking to complete this year. We know that number may increase as the year goes on. But just want to highlight some of the instructional points that are occurring. Ms. Phelps is leading our DBT SCL sessions every week that occurs in our core classes with each particular instructor. Additionally, Dr. D Durangri is working with our YPAR. As you know, each year they participate in a particular research project, and this year is no difference as it relates to that. And then I would just like to highlight that we support our students on a semester basis so that they are able to deliver credits that are needed as well as credit recovery opportunities noted there. And with our night school, you can see as well, we currently have 13 students that are in our night school program. We have implemented with the support of Ms. Bianca Johnson and Ms. DeJorn, our community circles. We also do that at Lugo Day School. But we're really honing in on the supports and needs of our students through community circles within our night school program. I'm super excited to talk about the partnership that we have with the Virginia Cooperative Extension as well as the 4H with Ms. Sarah Brown and Ms. Sarah Morton. They've been very instrumental, as you can see with one of the pictures with a garden that we continue to establish within our particular campus as it relates to student information. I do want to highlight our, again, our Planned Parenthood. That's a partnership that came along to work with our students on various aspects of maturity, adolescence and hygiene and measures of that nature there. Advance, please. So we've outlined three program goals, attendance, student enrollment with KTEC and the development in our workforce experiences. What we are finding is that we have a great campus percentage of attendance where our campus attendance looks well. But our student attendance is where we continue to need support. And so myself and Ms. Phelps and others are finding particular avenues of ways to encourage our students to attend school. And you'll hear more about that in the next slide. We want to increase our student enrollment to KTEC by 12%. That's just really eight students. And so Dr. Heltz and her school counseling team works adamantly with Ms. Phelps when it's time for programming to make sure that we have particular students that are able to sign up and enroll in that. And lastly, we want to enhance our workforce opportunities. That's really driven with our night school program, noticing that we have particular students that are working during the day. And so what we, we, meaning Ms. Brown and others, we are now finding ways where we are going to meet with the employers during the day of those students at night school so that we can talk about those interpersonal skills, those soft skills that have been established and figure out additional measures in which supports can be provided with those particular students. And that's just really at the ground level that we're beginning to build that out. Next slide, please. So our attendance and interventions, as noted before, our attendance looks good as it relates to our daily attendance with students coming to school. But we continue to look at what needs to be done for those individualized students. We have began to develop individual attendance plans with goals, incentives for those particular students. We've also highlighted where those students that have five or more days that are chronically absent, that we're working on those measures there. So students in the next couple of days are being celebrated for those young people that have attended for the entire month as well as so far with, in beginning with school. And then we also have those meetings with those particular students that have five or more absences that we can provide additional supports and find ways to knock on doors to get those young people at school as well. Next slide, please. So what are we looking forward to? Our night school program and LMA, finding innovative ways that we can bring our night school students in on Fridays and do some collaborative work with our groups that we have on our Friday afternoon so that we can have more of a holistic support in interventions and engagement with those particularly young people as well as finding ways that they can come on Fridays to possibly make up assignments and measures of instructional supports there. Our next slide will be able to outline recent experiences. On September 27th, with the support of Dr. Johnson making this connection, our students had the opportunity to attend the Jefferson School where they participated in the Revive and Thrive event. We had a financial literacy course, we did some boxing with War Time Fitness, and we also had some mental health circle of wellness engagement as well. On September 24th, in collaboration with the Virginia Cooperative Extension, Ms. Sarah Brown and Ms. Sarah Morton, our seniors at LMA as well as collaboration with our Charlottesville Middle School have the opportunity to attend a simulation of real life experiences with our Real Money Real World. That really gave a lot of traction because they came back the next day thinking they were heading back over there to learn more about that. So that's something we need to build upon with that. One of the activities that we are looking forward to in collaboration with the Virginia State School of Agriculture for our night school students is trying to develop a trip to have them go down to Virginia State to work with the School of Agriculture because we have begun that work with our night school program as well. Next slide, please. Our community partnerships are led by Mr. Williams. And so those particular engagements are between home and school. Outside of knocking on doors and trying to find ways to bring our children and families into the building, we're also trying to find innovative ways to continue that partnership between home and school to continue the trust that our parents have with our particular campus. It's no secret that it, the word is out that we are doing a phenomenal work. And so we want to make sure that we continue that momentum for those new parents that may be interested in allowing their students to come to LMA. So the partnerships within the community are organized for meaningful relationships, real world experiences. And one particular example of that is the Leather and Honey partnership that we have with Mr. James Dow and Mr. Sean Goodwin, excuse me, Mick Goodwin. Last year, they had the opportunity of creating particular t-shirts. And so we had a contest as related to rebranding the Leather and Honey opportunity. And so that was a big hit for us last year. Next slide, please. Here you will see the community engagement partnerships that we have established at the academy. As you see, we have Leather and Honey Movement Church with Ms. Taylor Boris. That's a particular opportunity where each year we have a school beautification. And as you can see here, where a team of us came together on a Saturday and we replanted part of our courtyard. You see the Department of Human Services where we had a Wellness Day, War Time Fitness. And I just would like to highlight where you see two of our students that participated last year in the Civil Rights Southern Pilgrimage Tour, that they had a great time hanging out with Mr. Williams and others there. Next slide, please. So what's next? We're having a cook it up math night with Mr. Williams and Mr. Grady where breakfast will be for dinner. We will also have our partnership with DARCE come to talk to our students with disabilities and our families about particular opportunities of access for our seniors. And so we're looking to have that October 22nd from 4:30 to 5:45. And that is a collaboration between our night school and our LMA program. Next slide. And before I take any questions, I would just like to introduce and bring up Ms. Zionna Minor. She's one of our night school students, and I just would like to allow her voice to be amplified at this moment. And then I'll come back to take questions.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley and fellow board members. My name is Zionna Minor. I currently attend night school at Lugo McGinnis Academy. When I first arrived at night school, I wasn't sure what to expect. From the moment I walked through the door, everyone welcomed me with open arms, which I graciously appreciated. The teachers and staff played a raise an amazing role in my growth and development. The smaller class sizes and personal life support helps me reconnect with learning. In the past, I have had issues with my attendance, but the teachers at night school are encouraging, pushing me to do my personal best. Staff members go the extra mile to ensure that students who may not have transportation can attend night school. And that plays an important role in students being successful. In addition to academics, we have an opportunity to participate in average enrichment activities such as gardening, music, learning how to manage our money and sewing. We're able to do this with the support of our community partners. My goal this year is to attend school daily. However, it can be challenging sometimes because I work full time during the day. But I am determined to attend night school and complete my courses. My ultimate goal is to graduate from high school and to become an NICU nurse, working with premature babies. Another goal is to transition back into Charlottesville High School and enroll in the CNA program at KTEC. This will prepare me from reaching my goal of becoming a nurse. At this time, I would like to thank you, Dr. Trotter, and the night school staff for giving us an opportunity to move forward and pursue our dreams of becoming productive citizens in our community. We are so grateful for your service, commitment and dedication to the Charlottesville City Schools and gratitude, Zionna Minor.
Thank, thank you. I'll take questions at this time if there are any.
Thank you, Dr. Trotter. Start on your end, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Morris.
Well, Dr. Trotter, I think I'll simply say this, and I thought about this earlier today when I was kind of reviewing the slides again before we came into the meeting. My time on the board is ending here. I don't know how many more times I'll see you, but it's honestly been a pleasure to see the work that you've done. You, from the outside looking in, it seems like you're always approaching this and you're like honestly seeing the students, which I think is reflected in the pictures that I see here, what we just heard from Ms. Minor. From what I'm hearing in terms of how many students that want to attend Lugo and want to attend night school, I just want to deeply show my gratitude towards you. Just thank you. Thank you for your work here in Charlottesville City Schools. I guess the only real question that I have is, well, I guess two questions. The first question is, how do we transfer some of your model, what you're doing now, back to Charlottesville High School or even the middle school? Like what can we do to enhance the opportunities for, I guess, general population or comprehensive school?
We, I, us, that's right, need to tell our story a lot better at Lugo. I've said it since I've been here going into year three, and I am holding myself accountable. We need to put out video footage, student expressions on the things that are going on so that those can be outshined, so those can shine within CHS as well as the middle school to say that this is a beacon where supports can be provided. We're not only for students that have disciplinary measures, but we may be for those young parents as well, male or female. And so that's where the story needs to begin. I have to do a better job of that. So yes.
What, what would you need from us? Because I think we've ran across this at least for one year and if not two years now of, you know, being at near capacity or full capacity. School buildings is always a, has been a conversation. I don't know if that's what you need or if we need to figure something else out. But I think like this board really appreciates you as a person, and we want to make sure that you're supported.
Yes, sir. Capacity. Yeah, and we're working, but yes, capacity, just to be honest. And I know that comes with time. I know things are in motion for that. And so just finding those spaces for our students to be successful. Recently, just got back last night from New Orleans with the Alternative School Conference. And so looking at ways that other schools have done it and finding those innovative ways to provide those supports for our kids as well.
Thank you very much. If I can just make one comment, and it's probably out of my capacity as a board member, but I'm going to say it because I got, I'm short on time. I, I think it would be, from my perspective, I think it would be helpful, a different PD opportunity for teachers at Charlottesville High School to spend a day with Dr. Trotter or half the day to kind of see what they're doing, seeing their model and seeing what they can bring back to CHS.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Ms. Burns?
Sure, thank you. It is no secret that I am a fan of LMA because my own child went there. Same one I spoke about last week or last month is the same one I'm speaking about currently. Who thrived there, but just when I think of all the hope that you and your team provide to our students in that space now and this, how you've been able to grow the program. And I think it's, it's extraordinary. And I don't use that word lightly, and I thank you and your team. I know it takes a team to do the work, and that speaks to your leadership as well. And so really want to echo what Mr. Morris is saying. And so I, I do wonder, and I hope that there are folks out there listening that say they want to get involved. They want to be a part of what you are doing, and they want their businesses and their organizations to provide jobs and hands-on training and mentorship and all the things that we need to keep your program successful and students having the opportunity. And so I'm wondering how might a community member who wants to be a part of what you're doing, how might they go about doing that?
Absolutely. I say it all the time, don't call, just show up. 341 11th Street Northwest.
Careful now, you're going to have a line at your door.
You're right. But yes, don't call, just show up. We do have some things in play. Ms. Phelps is working very hard with Ben Allen and PVCC on some measures as it relates to a portrait of a graduate that has been established for our seniors that have expectations and opportunities like that as well.
Great. And I think if I heard you, you need more space.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I really don't have any questions. You know, I'm a fan. One of the things I would say, I love that you all communicate. And I think that's important because one of the things that I think that LMA does well is you bring in parents and you are connecting not only with the student, you are connecting with the parents. And so you're also asking the parents what it is that they need so that their student can be successful. And I think that's a missing component, and I would like to see that incorporated into all of our schools is to making sure that we are connecting with the parents. Because the parent is the foundation of most of our children's home. And so if the parents are well and we're taking care and helping the parents grow, then you're going to see that reflect in the children. So that's one component that I appreciate. But also would like to highlight that I didn't see in your slide when I was also reviewing it is something that I attended was the, I think it was the Virginia Film Festival where you had some children that did a small film that was highlighted. And so I also want to talk a little bit about that because I was able to attend that film festival and to see the work that, and the partnership that you had. I think it was Lighthouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Lighthouse Studios and all of the work that, some of the, that went into that project. And so I think while Dr. Gurley have you all keeping it to nine or 10 slides, it's a lot of great things that, that are happening that we are not able to see. So just being able to share that information with the public. Thank you.
I think you, thank you. I really appreciated your presentation and a lot of my questions. All right, thank you, thank you. I really appreciated your presentation, and a lot of my questions have been answered, but do you guys have a waitlist? I mean, I know the capacity is small.
Not yet. We don't have a waitlist.
Okay.
We don't, honestly.
Because I remember last year, you say you had a waitlist, or people were wanting to come to night school because of their living situation. So do you come across any situations that seem special or circumstances that you have to turn away that may be the fit?
No, we're working with our school counselors here at CHS, and so there's probably about three young people that we are currently looking at for either our day or night. We're really just looking at those three. So the answer is no, because I will always circle back with Ms. Phelps, and I will talk to who the school counselor is to try to figure out what that best space is for that particular young person.
Okay, and then as for Friday, so can I get more clarification on that? So if they have night school on Fridays, they could come in early, and then they don't have to go to night school?
So for night school, there is no course on Fridays. That time is used for either if they're working, we still have the collaboration with KUP for those students that need jobs. What we want to do is we want to also have the opportunity for those night school students to participate in the clubs that we have, that we participate in Lugo Day, our cooking, sewing, art, sports. And so we don't have really the space for that at night school, so we want to allow those young people to be a part of that, as well as if they do have assignments and things that they need to make up, trying to find that particular one teacher that they can either work on Edgenuity or those project-based. So that's what we're leaning towards for second semester. How do we infuse that into our particular program? Yes, ma'am.
So I just, I don't know if you could feel it, but I just wanted to like hug you as you were presenting, because as Mr. Morris said, I mean, it's just been such a joy to see the program with you evolve and change. And I have to say that every time you do present, I love, I should just say all the presentations, but I just get so excited to see what the programs, how they're expanding and what they're offering our students as far as just life experiences. I mean, it's really, really powerful. So thank you, also from the bottom of my heart. I do have a couple of questions. You mentioned trying to increase the enrollment into K-Tech and some of those programs. What do you see as some of the barriers, or what are you working through that potentially to get those kids into those programs?
Encouraging them to go.
Encourage them.
They're comfortable at Lugo, and encouraging them to go, but also informing our night school students of the opportunity. So it's twofold, and so finding those avenues to, for tours and measures like that, which is just a simple phone call. It's just encouragement of them to go.
Yeah.
Yes, and our numbers have always, since I've been there, been low just because of that level of apprehension of what's going on over there. And so it's also our young people that are there telling the story of what's happening at K-Tech also. This is why you need to go over there, so that's why.
Okay, well, if there's anything we can do to help with that, please know. Also, I was curious just about, in one of your slides, it said all new enrollments participate in a reading assessment. So I was just curious, once you get those results, what and how are you differentiating supports, targeted supports to the different levels, and is there anything else we can do to help with that? Because I'm sure you see a wide range, and that is a key area that we all, you know, really prioritize.
Yes, ma'am. So that's headed up by Dr. Durangji. When she, when our students are enrolled, they will take a particular reading assessment to find out where their reading skill lies, and if it is a level of deficit or growth, then that's how we know how to support with scheduling them either through her particular course where she works on those particular skills, comprehension, reading stamina measures like that, or supporting them through Ms. Rose, who is our English teacher with a higher level of need. Dr. Durangji and I sit, and we do look at data from time to time, to look at those students that have shown growth throughout the semester and applaud and celebrate them there, but also supporting and looking at the students that are in our core English class and continuing to push them along with the supports that they equally need as well.
Thank you, thank you again.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna pile on the thanks. I think there historically has been the perception that LMA is where kids go for a punitive reason. And you have changed the narrative on that, that we have students who are self-selecting and want to go to LMA. And I think everyone in this room recognizes that, and to the extent that we can continue to push that out, as you said, I think is only going to be beneficial to the program and to our schools. This kind of, you know, prescriptive, just providing alternatives to students, I think is what like we're all about. And we know that there are still some small pockets of students that are not, you know, maybe they're not the right fit for LMA, they're still at CHS. And so I think we're getting some more information here in a couple of weeks at a work session to just continue to build upon this work to try to keep meeting students where they are and giving them what they need.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, and I would, just in case folks are watching, thank you to my LMA team as well, because this is definitely a team as well as our night school as well, so thank you.
Yes, please be sure to, yes, echo all of our thanks to your staff when you see them tomorrow, and is Ms. Minor still here? Yeah, so again, thank you for your comments and being here tonight. We do appreciate it. Where am I at? Ms. Swift's getting up, so I think it's her. So 13.2, our accountability report and data dashboard.
Sorry to disappoint, but I couldn't get my slides in six to 10, so sorry. Okay, so good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. Tonight, we present the Standards of Learning Assessment Results from the 24-25 school year. The presentation will provide an overview of these results, starting with the overall reading and math annual pass rates. And then we'll review the performance data for grades three through eight, high school reading, and Algebra I. And then I will also provide a few updates regarding the strategic plan data dashboard. And just want to make note that we initially planned to review the state's new accountability framework, but due to the VDOE delays, we will postpone that until that data and materials are finalized. All right, so priority one of our strategic plan is focused on student achievement with clear targets to guide our work. In reading, we aim to raise achievement to at least 75%, and in math to at least 70% across all student groups, while annually reducing the failure rate for Black and Brown students and students with disabilities, keeping our focus on closing the achievement gap. So this past spring, students took SOL tests based on the new math and English standards, which are more rigorous and set higher expectations to prepare them for the next grade level. These, the assessments now include more complex questions that require students to think critically and apply what they know across different standards. However, with new standards comes new cut scores. And so the state recently approved new SOL passing scores, which are much higher than the current cut scores. And so this change will be implemented this spring and will impact a large number of students across the state and across the city schools. But to show a comparison of the previous standards to the new standards, here is a fourth grade reading example that shows higher expectations of the new standards. So instead of memorization and recall, students must justify their reasoning and demonstrate a deeper understanding. In this fifth grade math example, students are asked to connect and apply multiple skills across standards instead of demonstrating one skill at a time. And so they have to get both question one and two correctly for that, for them to get that entire set of questions correct. All right, so now we're gonna look at the overall performance in reading and math, and this includes assessments from grades three through high school. The division's overall reading pass rate was 67%, a four-point increase since 2022 and up two points from the previous year. In math, we achieved a 67% pass rate as well, a 12-point increase since 2022 and up four points from the previous year. And so now we're gonna take a look at grades three through eight. So overall in reading and grades three through eight, we continue to see improvement with a six-point increase since 2022 and up two points from the previous year. In grade three, we outperformed the state by three points, and in grade six, we saw an eight-point gain at 66%, which was up from 58% over the last two years. So despite the rigor of the new English standards, most of our student groups demonstrated improvement. We saw meaningful gains of our Black students, English learners, and students with disabilities. Our Black student group increased by eight percentage points since 2022, and grade four was up seven points and grade six was up three points, or excuse me, 13 points. English learners showed steady gains across grades five through eight. And for students with disabilities, while there was a slight decrease in the overall pass rate, grade three improved by six points, and grade six increased 10 points from the previous year. So we know that achievement gaps remain, and so literacy remains a key focus as we begin year two of the VLA implementation and now extending through grade eight. Last year, teachers in grades four through eight completed required training in evidence-based literacy instruction to ensure they are equipped to provide high-quality instruction aligned with the science-based reading research. In this fall, teachers in grades five through eight administered the vowel screener for the first time, and this will be used to identify relative strengths and weaknesses in specific literacy skill areas. And the teachers are now, they're setting goals in the required student reading plans, we're monitoring progress, and using the student-level data to inform instruction and our intervention. Okay, now on to math. So grades three through math continues to show improvement, increasing 11 points since 2022 and up three points from the previous year. And some of those grade-level gains include an increase of seven points in grade three, with increase from 60 to 67%, six points in grade five, 54% to 60%, and then eight points in grade six, 55% to 63%. Most of our student groups continue to make progress even with the increased rigor of the new math standards. And over the past four years, our Black student group has improved by 13 points. Hispanic students have increased by 12 points, and the multiple races group by nine points. English learners and students with disabilities are also showing notable gains. And some of those include in grade five, our English learners increased by 11 points, and in grade six, students with disabilities rose by 20 points. As we work to close the achievement gap, we are strengthening tier-one instruction in math, providing targeted interventions, and expanding learning opportunities. We are also in the process of reviewing high-quality, standard-aligned materials for the upcoming textbook adoption. High-quality instructional materials are evidence-based, they're accessible to all students, and they will help us increase the rigor of our instruction. All right, so now moving to high school. So EOC reading, so high school reading has improved compared to last year, increasing by two percentage points. We also saw progress across our student groups. Our Black students increased from 48% to 54%, up by six points. Students with disabilities improved by nine points, and English learners gained eight points. And building on this progress, the English department is engaging in ongoing professional learning that is grounded in the science of reading, and they are collaborating with special education and English learners' teachers to strengthen comprehension and vocabulary instruction, ensuring that all students receive consistent, high-quality literacy instruction. So next, the Algebra I pass rates continue to show strong improvement over the past two years. At CHS, the pass rate grew by 10 percentage points with gains among our student groups. Black students increased by 14 points from 66 to 80%. Students with disabilities improved by 33 points, going from 44% to 77%. And then our English learners achieved an 81% pass rate, all of these pass rates higher than the state averages. Division-wide, the Algebra I pass rate increased by seven percentage points and surpassed the state average. This rate includes both middle and high school students who took the Algebra I and, of course, test. And so these results reflect the impact of solid tier-one instruction, collaborative team planning, and the continued implementation of standards-based grading practices that supports all learners. And as I shared earlier, we will, as soon as this information is released, we will bring that to you. All right, so we're gonna move on. A couple of updates with the data dashboard.
Can I, I'm gonna interrupt you here, and just maybe this is a good stopping point for questions on the first set of slides that were shared. That makes sense?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Reasonable place to intervene. Mr. Meyer, you look like you're ready to go.
Hi.
Thank you, Mrs. Swift. I like to see the trends, and I appreciate you sharing the multiple years of data here, and I'm happy to see the trends going in the right direction for, I think, everything. So within, you know, there was some key takeaways here, which were all great and were all very positive. I didn't see any significant, you know, in a couple of groups declines, but was there anything in there that popped out that I guess that wasn't in the slide that you're particularly concerned about?
There were a couple, like you said, not all student groups, but we did have a couple of student groups. I mentioned students with disabilities. There was a slight decrease in math, as well as in reading, and a couple of our other student groups, Hispanic kind of maintained, and Asian went down.
Yeah, what I think is, I'm gonna link this to something later on the agenda too, but our absenteeism, and, you know, I think I sent an email pointing out and asked you some questions, and some of these slides now aren't relevant because we took them out, but is there, do we see some relationships between absenteeism and some of these results, or not?
Yes, I mean, chronic absenteeism is one data point that, you know, what we were gonna share in regards to the framework scores and total points. The thing to keep in mind when that information does come out for the elementary framework scores, that also includes K2. So it's all students at the elementary level. And so when I pulled some numbers, because the most you can get in that category is 10 points, and so the majority of the schools that were considered off-track, you would have to have almost perfect attendance to bump up a few points. But the students in grades three and four, if they had, if they were not chronically absent and also passed, then that could shift points within that area. But yes, I mean, there is some of a correlation, but I think on a, on a scale of, you know, what's within our control also is, you know, really looking at tier-one instruction and strengthening those pieces, and also making sure like our tier-two supports and our tier-three interventions are meeting the needs of the students.
And, I mean, yeah, unfortunately, we can't really discuss it.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Didn't mean to lead you down that path, I'm sorry, but related to the absenteeism, we don't break out our absenteeism in these categories also, I don't think.
By student group?
Only by school, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do, okay. So there could be some analysis done again by grade, by these different demographics also, okay.
And schools do look at that information, like we look at it as a division attendance team, and then our school-led attendance teams, we also look at that information as well. and then our school-led attendance teams, we also look at that information as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Swift. Just in the reading pass rate, I think it's slide sixteen, we see in 2022 at eighty-one and seventy-one, seventy-three. Why, why are we still, what happened there?
Right.
What's the difference?
Good, good question. So that was the last year where the Work Keys Reading Assessment was considered, was in that pass rate, and so after that, they have now taken that out. So that's when the Work Keys was included.
And the test is different?
Yeah, so the test is, it's just the EOC, the high school reading test.
And then stood out to me the Algebra I pass rate, specifically with our Black students, and I just remember hearing and seeing Mr. Patterson's work with those students, specifically in Algebra I, and wanted to, you know, just highlight that and note that, but also know he's in a new role right now, so I hope he's passing some of that wisdom along to his friends so we can continue that, that progression there, but wanted to.
No, and I think in his role as an instructional coach, he can really help coach those other teams within the math department, and also in other departments, some of the things that he does really well, and then the relationship piece also.
All right, thank you.
So I guess my question was, looking over at some of the slides, and which number is? I think six, where the rigor will change for new testing, and how are we kind of preparing our students for that? With so many of our students that are struggling with math and reading, how are we preparing them for the, the test that seems to be a little harder than with their?
Right, right, yes. So we are in year two of implementing those new standards. So currently, right now, we are in math, looking at adopting a new curriculum that's aligned to the new standards, and so hopefully that will help teachers prepare students and increase the rigor of their instruction. Also, in English Language Arts, now with the Virginia Literacy Act, so all of our teachers, K-eight, have gone through the required training, and any new teachers that come on board will go through that training to make sure that their instruction is aligned with the science of reading. So hopefully, we will start to see that training and that professional development pay off this year and beyond. And now with the new VOWS screener in the, so in grades four through eight, teachers can use that information to really dive in and to see where students are, like around comprehension and vocabulary and spelling and those pieces, fluency, so they can better support students, and then make sure that we're providing the right intervention to meet their needs.
And I know we have like the tiered services, but outside of those tiered services, what other supports will, like the children that are really struggling with some of those skills, what will we be having in place?
So within our master schedule at each grade level, including the high school, they have an impact period, we have when time, what I need, and so that's truly based on what the students need. And so every quarter, schools are looking at their data to then see, okay, what students, you know, kind of based on the skills and the concepts that are being taught, like, do we need to take them out of this win block and maybe place them here? And so they're flexible groupings to make sure that students are truly getting, and supporting those students that are struggling. And they're getting that in reading and in math.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to highlight that my son, he did score a perfect hundred percent on the IDM essay score. I got an email, a text message from his teacher, and I just want to show that, you know, our schools are, we are putting out the work, and our students are achieving the things that we are working towards, so highlight Zaire for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Hopefully, he's watching, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Love the shout-out. So I attended just a quick literacy forum yesterday, and it was, I know this isn't our literacy presentation, but I just want to make note for those who might, and we can carry it forward to when she comes back to report to us again. And I, I'm just so thrilled that, that we've done the training, that science of reading is here. But one thing that I heard several of the presenters talk about was it not just training the teachers, but then the follow-up with them, and making sure that, that the science of reading and the training that they've gone through, that to fidelity, that they're able and that they are supported, because it's that follow-up to make sure, I mean, and we know that, but just really wanted to make, put a pin in that, and we'll come back to it.
Right, and I know, I think Anna mentioned some of this at the professional learning update, but I know, like even at the high school, they're working with Dr. Wexler and with the ongoing professional development, and also like at Walker and, I almost said Beaufort, CMS are working with outside literacy consultants to support that ongoing training and embedding that evidence-based instruction.
All right, thank you. So we'll get back on track, I think it was slide twenty?
Oh, yes, the strategic plan. So a couple of updates, so we, so the twenty-four, twenty-five data has, has been updated on the data dashboard. However, there have been some changes to some of the measures due to the new state reporting. So for VOWS, which formerly POWS, so we, and this is just a screenshot of what that looks like now that we added a new graph, and just kind of a little note there to say, we can't, I couldn't add it to that same graph because you can't compare those two measures, because they're measuring different skills and using different, completely different benchmarks. And so that's why you will now see a new graph, but we will leave that there, or either, as we build on to this, we'll link it to another page as well. And then we were going to discuss the graduation, the new graduation calculation rates, and the three-E readiness, which is the employment, enrollment, and enlistment. That, the three-E has now replaced the College, Career, and Civic Readiness Index. That was in the old accreditation model. And so again, once all that information has been released from the state, we will, we will update this data dashboard and then bring that information to you all. And so just on the next couple of slides, so each year of the strategic plan, we review our targets, the metrics, and strategies to ensure accountability, holding ourselves accountable. And so in these slides, we highlight our progress on the strategies aligned with each of these priorities. And so we've just kind of highlighted where we are making progress. So in some cases, in some of the strategies where we've moved from the planning year to the implementation year, we're making progress, or if you see, we were in planning year, we were on track, but now we're implementing. And so very different from planning to implementation, but we still are making progress for those strategies. So for priority one, that's strategy one and three. For priority two, we were, we are on track for all of those, culture of safety, wellness, and belonging. For priority three, so supporting our staff. So for three, we are making progress. We've gone from planning to implementation in the planning year. That was a needs attention, but we, we've looked in, into that strategy, and so now we are making progress as we start to implement. In strategy seven, thirteen, and sixteen, we are, we have moved from planning again to implementation and are continuing to make progress in those three strategies. And then as we move to stra, or excuse me, priority four, ensure effective and efficient operations. For strategy three, three and five, on track to making progress as we've moved from, again, planning to implementation. Strategy nine, making progress. And then strategy thirteen, still needs attention. And so I know operations, they're looking into that, working on that, on that's around, I think, the recycling and composting program, so we are looking into that. Hope to be making progress this year. So I know I went through that quickly, but are there any questions around the strategy progress? And those are all updated on the data dashboard as well.
I have a quick question, and please forgive me if I missed it. In terms of on-track or making progress, how was that, I guess, compared or reflected to the targets that we have? Like, are the targets accounted for in determining if it's on-track or making progress?
Yes, so we, looking at the metrics and the different measurements that are aligned to the targets and the strategies that, and then also you have to take into account, like, the planning year versus the implementation. So if we're implementing and we're on-track, then we feel pretty good that we're, we're approaching that overall target. But if we're in, if we are making progress, we feel like we've got headway, but we're not quite approaching that benchmark or that target.
Thank you.
And needs attention is, it, it needs some attention.
Thank you.
Other questions on the dashboard? All right, thank you, Ms. Swift.
Thank you.
We hope the state provides some clarity.
Yes, me too.
And next up, I believe we have Dr. Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Gurley. I'm excited to be here tonight to share two important updates related to family engagement and strategic initiatives. Last budget year, you approved a new position for our division, the Family and Community Engagement Outreach Specialist. This role was created to strengthen our division's capacity to build strong partnerships with families and community organizations. This position also focuses on providing learning around family and school engagement, organizing workshops that promote student achievement, and facilitating and attending events as a CCS engagement ambassador. In September, we welcomed Abigail Ferguson to our team as the first to hold this position. Abigail brings energy, professionalism, and a deep commitment to relationship building. She has already made an incredible impact, and we're thrilled to have her as part of our department. I've invited her here this evening so you can officially meet her.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Gurley. My name is Abigail Ferguson, and I'm a CCS specialist. Before this role, I spent over three years with the International Rescue Committee, supporting families and students from diverse backgrounds. In my short time at CCS, I've already had the pleasure of meeting many principals and working with some of our wonderful students and families. I'm committed to keeping families engaged and informed, and I look forward to all that we will accomplish as we work together to support student academic success. Thank you.
We are truly excited to have Abigail on our team. Our second update focuses on the division's official transition to the community schools model. A community school serves as a hub for its neighborhood, a place where not only education happens, but where students and families can access wraparound supports, such as health services and family engagement programs. The goal of this model is to remove non-academic barriers to learning so that every child has the opportunity to thrive. In 2019, the Virginia General Assembly directed the Virginia Department of Education to create a statewide community schools framework. Then in 2022, the video announced a funding opportunity for divisions to develop and implement this model. The framework emphasizes collaborative leadership, family and community engagement, student motivation, mental health, and meeting students' basic needs. The video extended funding opportunities where interested divisions could apply for planning and implementation grants for individual schools, clusters of schools, or at the division level. Here in Charlottesville, we have long recognized that students and families thrive when their needs are met and when their relationships and support networks are strong. We are grateful for all the community partners, organizations, and individuals who have been doing this important work for years. Additionally, CCS began having discussions during our initial reconfiguration conversations in 2021 about what it could possibly look like to build an infrastructure for wraparound services, possibly through a community schools model. Building upon these efforts, we applied for the Community Schools Planning and Implementation Grant in July of this year, and we are thrilled to share that we were awarded $235,000 to support our division's community schools initiatives that focus on literacy, attendance, and mentorship. While this funding was proposed, with this funding, we proposed an umbrella initiative called the Community Mentorship Coalition. Through the CMC, Charlottesville City Schools and the greater Charlottesville community will work together to, to create a structured program that uses community relationships to build a network of support for our students. Guided by the belief that we are better together, the CMC will bring together parents, families, nonprofits, the city of Charlottesville, the University of Virginia, businesses, and other community members to mentor students from early literacy through life and career readiness. Rooted in the community schools model, this initiative aims to transform our schools into hubs of opportunity, connection, and care. The CMC will include three key program initiatives. The first is what we're calling the Confidence and Comprehension Club, or CCC for grades K through six. In this program, community mentors and partners will volunteer during and after school to support literacy through tutoring and mentoring. They'll use division-provided literacy software and books to help strengthen students' foundational reading skills. We will train community partners to use a Lexia literacy program, purchase take-home literacy kits for participating students, and establish reading clubs at schools. And I want to give a special shout-out to Ms. Bizina Howard, who's leading, leading our first reading club at Summit under the leadership and facilitation of Ms. Juanika Howard through the city of Charlottesville. In addition, we are partnering with the Jefferson Madison Regional Library to host a reading celebration, and this will be hosted by Dr. Gurley on November first. This is an exciting opportunity to celebrate the joy of reading with students and families. The second program is called our Bridge Builders Program. This is designed for seventh and eighth-grade students. Its goal is to help students develop a sense of belonging and curiosity through exposure, mentorship, and authentic relationships. This program may include monthly teen-time events at schools, complete with food, games, and enrichment activities led by community members. These events can be held after school or on weekends, either on school grounds or in partner facilities. Bridge Builders may also include mentorship opportunities with, with trained adults from, from the community and real-talk circles, what we're calling real-talk circles, where mentors and youth facilitators guide conversations around identity, mental health, and purpose. The third program is called the LAB, also referred to as the Life Ready Academy, and will be designed for high school students in grades nine through twelve. The LAB will focus on promoting literacy through life readiness experiences. Selected students will participate in rotating workshops on, on, and topics such as financial literacy, resume writing, car maintenance, nutrition, time management, and tenants' rights. The program will also connect students with career exposure opportunities, and every senior participant will be matched with a CMC mentor who will help support their transition to post-secondary education, training, or employment. At the division level, the grant will fund a one-year community school specialist position to work alongside me and Abigail in, in implementing the CMC model and building the formal infrastructure needed to sustain the CCS goal of a smooth connection process for community partners, families, and students to, to access wraparound services and essential resources where needed. This will also include a discussion of our long-term goal of working with partners to provide medical and dental services. Additionally, we are developing a digital talent bank, which will serve as a living directory for community members who wish to offer their time, talents, or resources to support our schools. The grant also includes funding for a van, which we're really excited about, which will, which will help, which will help transport students to and from community schools events, assist with attendance initiatives by providing second-chance pickups for students when needed, and deliver supplies and basic needs items. The van will also become part of our face branding setup through, during events and activities. As part of the next steps, we will formalize an advisory board and working groups, and they will take the lead in organizing and implementing the programs outlined in the proposal. and they will take the lead in organizing and implementing the programs outlined in the proposal. The advisory board will function at the division level, while each of the three working groups will oversee the three program initiatives. We will have each group will include a diverse mix of staff, partners, families, students, and other community members. These groups are scheduled to begin meeting this month. We are incredibly excited about this opportunity that the grant provides and deeply grateful for the partnership that makes this possible. We believe this initiative will significantly strengthen our collective efforts to support students and families across Charlottesville City Schools. And thank you for your time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any thoughts you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and welcome, Ms. Ferguson. We're so happy to have you. Ms. Torres, I'll start down with you if you've got any questions, Ms. Richardson.
No questions, but I was excited to see the tenants rights included because that is very important, especially because I'm in the housing sector, so I really appreciate that. Start them young so they understand what they're going to be dealing with in the real world. Appreciate it.
And perhaps you can come speak.
Maybe, yeah.
I just had one quick question. I know that Lisa and I had met with Dr. Gurley sometime beginning of the month, and one of the things that I shared is having, we have some amazing groups that are that are doing the work in the community, especially like resident services groups. I know that PHA and CRHA both have resident services groups that they're working with some of the children in the community. And so one of the things that I would hope that we start to brainstorm is how we bring after-school programs back into the community. Yes, it's great to have them in the schools, but if we had them onsite in the community, because you know, some of our children are watching older siblings and stuff like that, and so they can always take advantage of some of the after-school programs. And so if we had them onsite in the community centers, we are doing all of this amazing redevelopment with some of our properties, and they have beautiful community center spaces. And so hopefully that we're integrating with some of this into our communities, and we're working with our community partners and the folks that are doing the work to serve our kids well.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. We had a conversation about that recently as well, and I remember I was at City of Promise at the time when then Roland Moran was doing reading and after-school care in the West Haven Community Center. I remember the impact that it had, so I'm interested in that conversation as well.
Thank you. I have also been serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as part of my duties on the school board. And so to Ms. Cooper's point, I think Parks and Rec is trying to do some creative work in the community with their connect sites and how they're trying to grow some programs for people. And so I'm just wondering if that could be another avenue of leveraging like the people and the communities that people trust to build out some of that programming and be more of a, I think, collaborative relationship with the city and that the city, our partners can see our students in that light as well. And so just would advocate for some some work in that space as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and welcome, Ms. Ferguson. Glad to have you join the team. This all sounds great. What I did note there is it seems to be funded only by a grant.
This is currently grant-funded.
Okay, and this is going to be for a one-year grant?
It is.
What happens after the grant funding ends?
So part of the conversation for this year is the sustainability plan. Part of the proposal had to include a sustainability plan. And so when we convene, we're looking at partners and the current work that we're doing to be able to sustain what's working and what's not work and roll off what's not working. And so as part of the conversation, Abigail will go alongside the grant-funded position so that we can build that infrastructure and continue to have it in the upcoming years. And so we will need to continue to build off of the base that we will build this year, and then Abigail in her role will continue to take the time and will sustain it as we need to. So we hope to use data and figure out the impact that we're making through the programs, figure out what's what's working, what we may need to look at and do differently, and then build off of that through partners, through partner work in our current work.
Answer my next question, which was a lot of, what are you going to be, you are going to be measuring things and seeing what's working, and then again, keep that going, and again, drop off other stuff. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, quickly, sorry, I got my memory jogged by a couple of folks up here, so thank you for that regarding just partnering with the city, parks, or whoever. A couple of years ago, I know that a few of us advocated for city council to kind of put a pocket of money aside for youth programs and youth support. I don't know if that's still there, but I think it would be worthwhile. Maybe Dr. Gurley can ask or or somebody, but that might be a a possibility, another end to have a conversation, because I do feel like we really do need the supports in the community as well, so it seems like a nice opportunity to see what we can do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I think you get to stay with us.
Good evening, Madam Chair again, School Board members and Dr. Gurley. I'm here this evening to share important updates related to the School Resource Officer Memorandum of an Understanding, or MOU. In this presentation, I'll provide an overview of the major updates and highlight additional revisions to what we're calling version two of the MOU. I've given each board member a copy of the MOU, and if you're in the audience and you'd like to follow along, there are some versions on the back, so you can walk through it with us. Bianca will also share a summary of the feedback we received through community engagement efforts and discuss upcoming feedback opportunities. Please feel free to ask questions as they arise. Members of the committee who are present will do their best to respond, and if additional information is needed, we'll be sure to follow up. Just a quick reminder, the MOU outlines what will happen, while the Standard Operating Procedures, or SOP, does more to describe how it will happen. The second version of the MOU was published as part of the presentation materials and is available on the Charlottesville City Schools website. The accompanying SOP will be published around October 15th. I like to begin by highlighting five major updates to the MOU, which were made to align with some of the feedback we've gathered over the past several weeks. First, the number of SROs has been reduced from four to two. One will be based at the high school, and one will be based at the middle school, and both will float as needed to serve LM A and other schools. This change addresses concerns about the financial impact as well. The Charlottesville Police Department will repurpose two existing vacant positions in order to implement the MOU with no request for additional funding to add positions. The revised MOU also strengthens accountability by measuring accountability measures by specifying that the agreement will automatically pause if there is a federal takeover of the Charlottesville Police Department or any agreement with ICE. In addition, it now clarifies that the Charlottesville City Schools will co-select school resource officers in partnership with CPD. Finally, this version incorporates student-centered language and protections inspired by the NYCLU model, reinforcing our commitment to maintaining student rights and well-being in everything we do. We'll review those changes a little more in depth, along with additional updates on the following slides. We'll also encourage, we also encourage interested stakeholders to review the full updated version of the MOU for a comprehensive understanding of all revisions. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. Here to share an update on our recent community engagement efforts regarding the School Resource Officer Program. I want to start by saying thank you to everyone who has taken the time to share their thoughts and perspectives. We know that this issue, this is an issue where people hold strong and wide-ranging beliefs, and we value all of your voices. Since our last update, we focused on creating numerous opportunities for dialogue. Our survey remains open at charlottesvilleschools.org/sosros, and we've hosted six dedicated community or staff information hours for attendees to hear updates, have their concerns addressed, and questions answered. We've also held student-focused events at both the high school and LM A, and just yesterday, Kim and I participated in the Justice Coalition Meeting to share updates and answer questions. Through all of these engagements, including community and student info hours and the responses submitted through the Google forum, we've seen some themes emerge that are guiding our next steps. We have clearly heard the dissatisfaction with the decision-making process. Many have expressed a desire to have been involved earlier, and I want to acknowledge that concern. We've listened to a range of opinions on the program itself. While a larger share of the voices at these events and in the form responses have expressed some opposition to the current decision, we've also heard from parents, staff, and students who support the presence of SROs and their role in school safety. We continue to take all viewpoints into consideration. We appreciate the detailed questions we received about the specific training, background, and supervision that the SROs will have. We hear and acknowledge the community's desire for high standards, and we are focused on ensuring that the SROs are trained not just in security, but in topics such as de-escalation, relationship building, and how our schools operate. We've heard concerns about the fact that SROs are sworn police officers who are armed. The SROs must be sworn officers because they are the personnel authorized to handle state-required police tasks and criminal matters on the school property. We'll continue to define and explain this requirement while also detailing the specific, limited scope of their day-to-day role in the building, which is another thing we've seen highlighted as curiosity in the feedback. We've heard questions like, what does their role look like in specific scenarios? Or how will they interact with students? Ultimately, we've seen that every piece of feedback we've received is driven by a desire to achieve two things: save schools, and equally important, that schools feel warm and welcoming for all of our students, and this is our commitment too. Thank you all for continuing to engage in this necessary dialogue to make this successful. I now like to take a minute, a few minutes, to walk through the additional changes included in the updated MOU. And just to note that this MOU is still under review at the city attorney's office and may undergo additional changes based on their direction. So we have our MOUs, and if you would like, feel free to walk through as I name the page numbers to follow along. As we discussed earlier, feedback from various stakeholders, including some board members, questioned the need for the original number of SRO officers, which was originally four. After careful review, the decision was made to pile the program with two SROs instead of four. Starting with two officers allows us to gather meaningful program data, evaluate school needs, and make informed adjustments in the future. There were also concerns about the financial impact of onboarding four officers. By reducing the number to two, CPD has committed to staffing the SRO positions by repurposing two existing vacant positions. This means there will be no new budget impact for the program's rollout. We also received a recommendation to review and incorporate language from the New York Civil Liberties Union's model, which we're calling the NYCLU model. According to the NYCLU, their model was created to meet legal requirements while safeguarding student rights and promoting a supportive school climate. They emphasize that it's not meant to describe a perfect school environment, but rather to establish policies that prevent overreach and reduce potential harm caused by excessive police involvement in day-to-day school operations. The NYCLU encourages districts like ours to use it as a framework for handling unexpected situations, so educators are not called upon to make policy determinations on the spot. Drawing from this model, CCS has incorporated additional language throughout our MOU. For example, you can go on page two and see that regarding circumstances and processes for removal or reassignment of an SRO, and more language in the program evaluation section that's also on page six. And you should notice some darkening of the text, and that's where the changes are highlighted. Specific additions include the stakeholder feedback and complaint subsection started on page eight and the public reporting subsection at the beginning of page nine. The goal was to incorporate more details about these program components in the MOU. And if you have any questions along the way, feel free to ask. We will also ask to clarify how officers will be selected for the SRO program. If you look at the top of page 12, it now more explicitly states that the Charlottesville City Schools and Charlottesville Police Department will jointly select officers for the program. It's at the very top. It also clarifies that training, supervision, and evaluation of SROs will be a shared responsibility between CCS and CPD. If you look further down on page 12, the MOU expands on specialized training requirements. It specifies that every SRO must receive training in key areas, such as relevant state and federal laws, school and personnel liabilities, personal liability, security awareness within school environments, mediation, conflict resolution, de-escalation techniques, disaster and emergency response, systemic and individual racism, cultural diversity, implicit bias, working with students with disabilities, mental health needs, substance use disorders or past traumas, and student behavior dynamics, including current research on child and adolescent development. Finally, there was a request to define the specific circumstances that would automatically terminate or pause the program. If you head back to page two, that you'll see the language that states that either the Charlottesville City School Board or CPD may terminate or pause this agreement at any time if local conditions or uncontrollable external factors create conflicts with the goals of the MOU. This latest revision now adds more specific language that the MOU will also be considered null and void immediately if the Charlottesville Police Department comes under federal operational control or if CPD engages in immigration enforcement activities that involve sharing student or family immigration status or facilitating immigration-related arrests. Do we have any questions before we move on to the next slide? There was also a request to clarify whether the SROs will use body-worn cameras. This is being addressed in the SOP, which will outline that SROs will use body-worn cameras in keeping with the CPD policy with additional measures to protect student privacy. I'm heading over to pages 13 and 14. There were several inquiries requesting an explanation on specific incidents or circumstances SROs would interact with students. General guidance and expectations are covered throughout the MOU, including on pages 13 and 14, which notes, unless there is a clear and imminent threat to safety, the SRO should act only upon request of school administrators. Requests for SRO law enforcement assistance are to be channeled through a school administrator. Guiding principles for conduct representing a clear and imminent threat to safety may include poses substantial harm to physical well-being of another person, is willful and malicious, and causes substantial harms to the property of the school, constitutes the permanent taking of property of substantial value. It also says that SROs shall not act as school disciplinarians as enforcers of student rights or responsibilities, nor may they act in place of school officials for classroom management or in place of school social workers, counselors, psychologists, or psychiatrists on school property or at school-sponsored events. Generally, SROs shall not have, shall not use police powers to intervene in normative child and adolescent behaviors, and school staff shall not request intervention of SROs when responding to normative child and adolescent behaviors. There will be more specific guidance and examples in the SOP. We're going to page 17 of the MOU. We also clarify protections for immigrant refugee students and overall student privacy, which can be found under the information sharing section of the MOU. The addition specifically notes that CCS shall not initiate communication with any law enforcement agency regarding a student's or family member's FERPA-protected or otherwise personally identifiable information. CCS and CPD shall not enter into agreements to share information with federal immigration authorities, except as required by law. In the SOP, we are also outlining other protections needed for special victims, which was also a concern. Special victims are victims of a sexual crime, attempted crime, or abuse. Special protocols and properly trained personnel need to be used when addressing the situations, and this is especially true for minors, and we are taking that into account. On page six in the MOU, under the section called Evaluation of the School Law Enforcement Partnership, we discuss program feedback and evaluation metrics. The document notes that the feedback and assessment process is continuous and must include qualitative and quantitative measures, perspectives of various stakeholders from within CCS, CPD, and from families, a focus on youth perceptions, measures, a focus on youth perceptions, measures of assessing collective impacts on school climate. Specific metrics include the climate surveys required by the Code of Virginia. Under this code, school divisions complete school safety surveys of staff and students alternating between the middle and high school each year to assess school climate. Student behavior and administrative response, or what we call SBAR, reporting will also be used. This allows evaluators to consider measurable objectives, such as how many incidents are reported to each school or reported each school year, and how many resulted in law enforcement action. Analysis will differentiate between incidents of administrative discipline and law enforcement actions. Additionally, the CPD will provide data regarding youth involvement with law enforcement quarterly to the CCS Coordinator of Safety and Security, unless otherwise requested by CCS. Information sharing between CCS and CPD will be essential for providing the quantitative data required for overall program evaluation. In addition to CPD juvenile offender data, all occurrences in which SRO makes official contact with a student on school property must be logged by SROs, and all such reports must be reviewed by CCS administrators. For the purposes of this MOU, we define official contact as questioning a student for law enforcement purposes, detaining of a student, an apprehension, citation, or arrest of a student. Other contacts between SROs and students deemed necessary to support student safety and well-being as determined by the SRO, SRO supervisor, or CCS administrator. This logging of official contact is in addition to the reporting required by the school board policy or by the statutory requirement. The MOU also describes ongoing performance review meetings, evaluations, and the development of a mechanism for students, staff, and families to provide feedback, which is also what we heard was needed and we all, we agreed, regarding the SRO program by reporting positive and/or negative interactions with SROs via an online form. This form will serve as a way for stakeholders to initiate a report of any notable interactions or observations involving SROs. These are feedback items that have been addressed thus far. There is a version, again, there's a version of this MOU available online that highlights the key differences between the original published draft and the updated version of our MOU. Any questions about the second half?
All right, Mr. Meyer.
Dr. Johnson and team, I really appreciate the report out and the version that you provided that shows those changes. I think it reflects what I've been reading in the report outs from all your different events, in addition to the conversations I've been having in the community. You know, I think people want to see a lot of explicit things, and then, you know, to a certain extent, it's, and MOU, like you mentioned, is a little bit higher level. SOP is a little bit more in the weeds, and I do ask people to give a little bit more. I think there's a lot more explicit content now in this MOU, which is great. Again, I think it probably addressed a lot of the concerns we've heard, but also that people understand that SOP is where a lot more explicit things will be. So, thank you for all your work on that. I don't want any questions. Thanks.
Not specific to this, but I did want to point out there was some feedback from community members in regards to making sure that we heard student voice and just want to make sure we really highlight the good work that I think we've done there. And I think in last month's presentation, we just highlighted the few opportunities that were here at the high school, but we're able to then identify that we should go to the middle school, and that opportunity is upcoming, and then doing the work at Lugo McGinnis Academy. So just highlighting that student voice is being heard and taken into account, that these comments are not all from, you know, the community adults and adult stakeholders, but really highlighting the feedback that our students have given us. And I think, unfortunately, Mr. Schwartzman had to go, but just to be able to echo that our student feedback has been, I think, quite remarkable. I've been able to take part in that, as have Ms. Dooley and Ms. Cooper and Ms. Torres, along with Dr. Gurley and his team, and really hearing the reflections of our own students weighs heavily, I think, on our group and what they're sharing and is reflected in this work. So just wanted to make mention of that. Thank you.
I had a question on page eight in the first highlighted, so second paragraph on page eight, where it talks about the official contact reports and identifying whether the incident was or was not school-related. And I was just hoping to get a little bit of clarity about what, like, it's in school. So how are we, like, what makes it not school-related? And so, second paragraph, the highlighted paragraph on the top one on page eight.
Good evening, members of the board. Just to get into the weeds a little bit, this could be referring to incidents that are being reported by a student at school related to things that have occurred outside the school. That's the most self-evident example I can come up with. I'm sure there would be others. Members of the work group have really kind of tried to get down as far as we can to come up with every available outcome to think of, you know, everything we can to think this through, and that's where a lot of this language comes from. It's us trying to work out every possibility to make sure we're covered.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wade, before you go, Lieutenant Wade, that's already happening currently, right? Our officers are already interfacing in this role. This is just naming it in a document, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then my other question is in regards to the evaluation tool of the SRO. You know, I'm familiar with evaluation tools that we use for school personnel. And so, and this may be forthcoming, but just is there an evaluation tool that's unique to the school resource officer that this combined evaluation group would have over them? Or is it like the CPD? Do you guys have a similar evaluation tool, like what we use for school personnel? And just kind of how, how is that going to look?
So I'll give you my opinion. I won't speak for the breadth of the work group, but what I will say is that CPD evaluates their employees every year. I haven't seen the evaluation tool that's used for the teachers, so I can't make a comparison to that. But what I would say is that across the board, we're viewing this as a collaborative effort, so it wouldn't make sense not to have the evaluation be handled the same way.
And so perhaps I'm just adding more work to the work group to, you know, think about what, what that looks like to be this, because it says that we, the two entities are going to work together for training, supervision, and evaluation. And so just, I think we need a tool. We need something, some rubric that's being measured.
And I'm certain we probably do not have to, like, reinvent the wheel. We, there are clearly other school divisions that have school resource officers, so we could use their document and craft it and make it into our own if there isn't something that's specific to school resource officers. But we most certainly can see what other places are using and then tailor it to meet the needs of Charlottesville City Schools.
And Ms. Dooley, I don't know, and Ms. Burns, help me out, or other committee members. I think in discussing this, there was definitely a desire and there was feedback to really want to be able to, like Lieutenant Wade said, collaboratively evaluate the efficacy of the program and how it's going. And so using some of these reporting as far as the incidents and really being able to designate, you know, what types of incidents and looking at that to see if there were trends that some of that data would feed into the evaluation, just of the overall program. So I think that feeds into it, but I don't know if the Colorado model or any of those other templates we looked at, but there was some strong language in those where it really did pare down. Maybe it was the Alexandria model initially looked at how they would evaluate the program and the SROs that are assigned to the schools, but we can...
Yeah, well, it's almost like we're evaluating two things. We're evaluating the program overall, but then also the unique individual at each school. And so I think, like, there's going to be some crossover in that data, but then, like, there, when it comes down to it, like, we're, that one person, is it the right fit? That, I don't know, that data maybe doesn't align. And so what is the, I don't know, what is the tool? And it doesn't sound like we have it yet, which is fine, but just if we can continue conversation around that.
Sure.
Ms. Cooper? Tired to go. Yeah, am I going the right way? Yes, do you have any questions? Ms. Richardson, Ms. Torres?
I did want to just kind of piggyback a little bit, Ms. Burns, as far as some student feedback. And yes, several of us had the opportunity to spend some time here at the high school, and I felt like it was worthy for those of us here right now to kind of hear. And I know that we have been doing an exceptional job trying to push this out in different ways, as our parent square, and making this available for people to look at and provide feedback. And I appreciate that we've extended that and we're still gathering feedback. But I think what struck me today, and just kudos to these high school students because they were very engaged and they were very gracious in letting us kind of interrupt their lunchtime. So I was grateful for that. But I think it, even though we've pushed this information out, there were still really valid and thoughtful questions. And to the extent that you or, and whoever comes into this school to work, and as we really roll out the program, I just wanted to share some of the questions that I heard today in the comments because I felt like several hours after the fact, I was still able to sit down and write them out. So again, just questions about what will CSAs do? So just needing clarification again around, or some students just haven't figured that out, you know, so, but hopefully we're taking notes here. I have them. I can pass them on. How will SROs be introduced to students in a non-threatening way? And we've talked about that, but again, to hear it from a student, obviously it's weighing on them. Adding SROs into the mix will increase the already adult-heavy presence and pressure within the building. Another comment was, my sibling was here when SROs were in the school, and it, it felt like it was an aggressive type of presence. Under what circumstances will they pull their gun? And there was a lot of conversation around that, so. And safety concerns. How do we know how secure their weapons are? What type of training will an SRO receive? Is it different, and how long does it take? Will they be policing the hallways? Will they be arresting kids, and if so, for what, and under what circumstances? And I know we have answers to all of this, but again, I think the fact that these questions were percolating still, you know, just shows that we still need to do work. And I don't know what the best way to reach every single one of those kids with this information. And I'm looking at you, and it's not like it's your fault. I know this is teamwork, but I just want, want everybody to hear this. And what other types of duties will they have to fill their eight-hour day if they're not out in the hallways? So anyway, I don't know that any of the students are listening, but I want to thank Dr. Malone and everybody for allowing us to push in and receive some of this information. And I think this just shows that nowhere did I hear people, everybody said, yeah, we've heard about it. So I think that's, that's a good first step. But these questions, I think, were, like I said, very thoughtful and respectful questions, and they were interested to want to know these things. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's also a couple of additional slides around timeline and next steps, if you would like to review those at your convenience. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Next up, we have some board response to written reports. The first one is our school board member committee reports, and kind of go through these if anybody has comments that they, or questions they have on them.
Yeah, Ms. Dooley, for chair, if I could, on the member committee reports, several of us were able to take opportunity to visit schools just the past week. It was the week of the 29th that we had designated as a board to do some visits and wonder if we might have a little bit of discussion there as to what we were able to, you know, observe and how we were able to interact with our students. So just wonder if the board would be interested in that conversation.
Sure, if people want to share any kind of high-level highlights or reflections on their time, we can kind of go down the line again, Chris.
Yeah, thanks. I visited Summit, and I think I want to, just one reflection from my visit there and conversation with Principal Johnson was an unfortunately continued kind of drop-off, pick-off situation with unsafe behavior by a lot of drivers and disrespect to the crossing guard and getting kind of reflected on that with Dr. or Mr. Hartline's observations too. So I still think we have some work with our city partners in this case to do around that, specifically at Summit. I also thought about, kind of as we change up, I heard a little bit about fourth graders and a certain amount of chronic absenteeism kind of issues. And as we push fifth graders back down to the elementary schools, I think that's an opportunity. But again, and kind of those supports for helping students and families norming school attendance, I think, seeing a lot of changes, but we need to keep that up. Finally, I visited Charlottesville Middle School after a brief stop here at the high school, having gotten my calendar wrong, but wanted to, sorry, Dr. Malone, but had a great conversation with, I'm sorry, Principal Jordan, and hearing about how a lot of his teachers are doing a great job, kind of meeting his students and then setting up a kind of good examples and engaging with students right away in the classroom. So those were my observations.
Thank you. Ms. Morris? Ms. Burns?
Sure, thank you. I had the opportunity to visit some schools, start with the Charlottesville Middle School with Principal Jordan, and just really want to acknowledge the work that Mr. Jordan has done. It is a tremendous undertaking to renovate, build, reconfigure a building, and have to be in it and lead instruction. And so really just wanted to take the opportunity to thank him and his staff for that time. Something that he did mention, so where they're currently serving their meals will need to be demolished winter break-ish time. And so the quasi cafeteria will need to move into the new cafeteria. And I think there's still some, like, lingering questions about that work, that so much needs to be done during that time. And while our staff should be taking that time to rest and rejuvenate, I think there's some concern that Mr. Jordan and our facilities team may have to be there to do some of that work and just want to somehow honor their need for some rest coupled with the work, right? It's so much work to do. If I need to throw on some sneakers, I'll go over, but I, you know, we might have to. It could be a community-led effort. I don't know. But just want to be really mindful of what we're asking our staff to do during that winter break time so that we're ready to come back to a brand-new cafeteria. And then, is it great there? It was really wonderful to go by the classrooms and see, be able to see into the classrooms and not have to necessarily just interrupt learning by unlocking, opening a door, going in. Like, we could really see actual learning happening. And one might think that windows are distracting, but actually, what Mr. Jordan tells me is that because we have, every classroom has windows and you can see in it, becomes less of a distraction. And so that was really impactful to see all the learning that was happening in those spaces. And so from there, went over to Lugo McGinnis Academy. I think I've said everything I need to say about Lugo and Dr. Trotter and his work, but just also being mindful of the role that he has. He's overseeing Lugo McGinnis Academy. He's, he's helping at new pathways. He's helping with night school. He is wearing several hats. And also now our disciplinary hearing officer and taking on some consulting with principals on discipline matters. So I just want to be mindful of what we're asking, the hats that we're asking our staff to wear and that they're being compensated appropriately for those hats. and that they're being compensated appropriately for those hats. And then I was able to spend some time here at Charlottesville High School. And just to echo Ms. Torres, our students are just truly remarkable. The words that they shared during my time with them on our visit. Ms. Cooper and I came and went separate ways to capture as many students and staff voices as we could. But there's still some work to do. And I think that's reflective of our upcoming work session on October 23rd, where we will talk about some of these behaviors of our students and what it looks like here in our high school to support our staff and also support our students and families to meet them where they are at and what, hear what they need from us to be successful. And then I went to Summit for my usual harvest of the month, which was lovely. It's my favorite place. Thanks.
So briefly, I went to Trailblazer and spent some time with Dr. Baptist, who is kind of our pinch hitter principal, and Ms. Beverly and just had a great time observing some classrooms. That's a very vertical school, if you guys haven't been there recently, lots of steps. But yes, was just a joy to be there and also got to see two practicum students from UVA that I think were a little bit terrified that a school board member walked in as they were doing one of their, one of their lessons. But they did great. So it was lovely to see that. Spent some time over at Walker. The nurse was out. So I really got to observe the clinic. And just to see Dr. Thompson and really all of the staff pitch in to help was really awesome. But a note to us in budget season, we should not be cutting nursing positions because nothing, you know, nothing got done besides nurse clinic things. And then got to be at CHS as well. And my only comment there is how great the off-and-away policy is. Like at lunch, like kids are playing hacky sack. That's what we did when I was in high school before we had cell phones. And so it's just been, that's one thing that I think, like seeing kids talk to each other and talk to us was pretty cool. Ms. Cooper?
So yeah, I've visited a lot of schools. So elementary schools, Summit, I've spent a lot of time there. I would say, I want to say that Carmella Johnson and Pamela Davis is doing an awesome job at Summit. I want to say that, you know, Summit is one of the schools that have a lot of social, students with social emotional challenges. And so just watching them and how they navigate some of those. Sometimes you can see four or five students in the office at one time. But you know, the love and the compassion that they have for their students is just amazing to watch. So I just kind of want to highlight that. Also had some time to spend, I spent some time at Trailblazer with Ms. Baptist and Ms. Beverly as well. And one of the things that I enjoyed seeing, I would say with all of the elementary visits that I was able to do, was that they were actually teaching. And, you know, the kids weren't like sitting in front of a laptop. Like you actually seen some instructional, the teacher up at the board talking and engaging with the students. So, you know, that was really like good for me to be able to kind of witness some of those interactions. You know, I got to a point where I was like, let's not go into the class because I felt like the kids were getting distracted. I was like, who is that? And then, but just that it was warm to see my heart. And I want to highlight that I did also visit Charlottesville Middle School. And I got to spend some time with Mr. Jordan. And so one of the things, I felt like it was a sense of calmness when I walked into that school. And I would say that when we was on our walks, one of the things that I observed and I really appreciated is that he took the time to speak to everybody that he walked past and to engage with them. And I think that's important when you're in a leadership role, even when it's time since you don't feel like, you know, to show up your best self. He was smiling. He was talking. A couple of times we had to talk and engage with the construction crew. So like Amanda said, I think he's wearing a lot of hats. And for us to be able to appreciate and acknowledge that, because when we have good quality people, we want to keep them, keep them, keep them around and acknowledge the good work that they're doing. So I appreciated that. And also I had not taken a tour of Charlottesville Middle School. So it was nice to walk the school and also been able to look into the classrooms and to see the teaching that was happening. I had a sentimental moment that brought tears to my eyes when I was there as well. I saw a young lady and I'm sorry that I don't remember her name. But it was two young males there that, you know, they had gotten themselves into a little bit of trouble. But she was taking the time to have a conversation with them and she was sharing with them about her experience and her life. And I think that those are the moments that goes amiss, whether they take what she said at that moment. I think, but when they become adults, they're going to always remember that conversation that she had with them. And so I really appreciate seeing that, that level of connection. Because even though they were in trouble, they were engaged and they were listening to what she had to say. So that showed me that they had a great amount of respect for her. And so, and also I came to visit Charlottesville High School. And I've been here several different times. And so again, you know, I think that our teachers, one of the questions that I asked all of the principals that I engage with is how are you taking care of yourself? Because I know that this work is hard and so remind them to take care of theirself because self-care and burnout is real. And so when you're dealing with so many things that are happening within school, within your personal life, I want to remind each and every one of our students, our teachers and our admin and even the, you know, the other employees of Charlottesville City Schools to always take care of yourself and recognizing if you feel like you are to a point where you burn out, then take time for yourself, whatever that look like for you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Richardson?
Yeah, I had the capacity to visit CHS this week. I came during a quiet time. I was here like from 1:00 to like 1:30. I will probably be back early morning. I was told to come Thursday, Friday, see some action at 9:00. The long lines, I was sort of lookout for a lot of late students. So yeah, that's where I stand with the, the school visits right now. When I do have time and I could pop in, I will pop in. It's good to hear that all of you have been visiting the schools. So when they saw me, they wasn't too surprised to why I was here. So yeah, that's mine. Did you visit any schools and stuff?
I was able to just get two in and I also had a schedule mixed up. So Mr. Meyer, you were not, not the only one that showed up and surprised the principal and said hi and nice to see you. See you another time. Anyway, I was able to just again, two elementary schools and my, so I went to Greenbrier and Tall Oaks. Which one did I actually see? Jackson-Brier or Tall Oaks? But really was focused my time on, on walking and looking at spaces and as they prepare for receiving fifth graders next year. So kind of discussing with the principals, you know, just how they're looking and what they're planning to do as far as space and where different classes will go. And, and just trying to check in with them as far as what their needs might be to make that a smoother transition. Of note, and I did elevate this to Dr. Gurley and the team as far as a budget priority of mine that I added late to my list. And this was not the first time that I've seen this through the years, but seeing our specialists working with kids in hallways or in stairwells and doing an excellent job. And the kids were totally engaged. And, and I think there are some benefits to sometimes being adjacent or close to the actual classroom as far as time and getting them what they need. But really wanting us as a board and, and then as we look bigger as far as our CIP and what we can do for space to have designated quality spaces for our specialists and our students who need that extra time so that they're not sitting three little chairs and an adult at the top of a stairwell. But kids looked happy and engaged and I think everybody is doing the planning, you know, while they're running, running their ship currently, but really trying to look ahead and see where the fifth graders would go and, and you know, trying to juggle class size and those types of things. So really, and I know you all are working on that and that's an ongoing planning thing, but it, it seems like it could be something that's going to sneak up on some principals as they're trying to focus on what they're doing right now. So, but enjoyed it. Love, love to have that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. We also had, we have the outcome of student disciplinary matter, 14.3 chronic absenteeism.
Colleagues, we have this excellent report. And here, what I'd like to note is the continued improvement. Dr. Gurley? And trend, I do see some schools ticking back up a little bit. But we will watch this and see what happens. But I think we're back down to 16% at the moment. It's a good start. We were at 21% at the end of last year. So let's keep up the good work. I did get two notices, I think today, my phone rang or I got the, from my kids having perfect attendance. So I like to see that continued type of communication. I think this is again, different than we did last year. So.
Awesome. And then the last one is facility rental rates. All right. Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Morris.
I do have a quick question. So I see at the top, it said recommended to go into effect for new rentals beginning January 1st. Would that be if after January 1st, someone says, hey, we want to reserve this space? And not if they want to reserve it today for a future date? Is that correct?
So we would only be accepting reservations through the end of the school year now. But if someone did make a reservation prior to January 1st, it would be under the current rates. The, the thought was that those rates would go into effect for new reservations that we start taking as of January 1st.
Okay.
A lot of things are already frankly booked for the year between Parks and Rec and different, you know, so churches. So the die is kind of set largely anyway.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Oh, not so fast. So sorry. Can you speak to why the PAC did not increase? We've gotten some feedback previously that there are much-needed repairs and chairs and carpet and things like that. I don't know if that's.
So, cost-wise, the rate for that didn't appear to be wildly out of line with other facilities. Right now, what that facility really has going for it primarily is just the size of it. But as you stated, there are a lot of repairs needed. We are just now getting some, under leadership of Virginia Cauldron, who's been doing a great job. We are starting to see more of a break-even with cash flow from rentals, with, with what we track with the operations of just very limited staff that support that space. My thinking was not to make a move on that until those facilities are actually improved because we're not going to generate enough rental revenue to move those big capital projects. But if we can sustain the momentum we've recovered with rentals since the pandemic, keep that going. And then yes, when the, when the facilities are nicer, when the carpet and the lighting and these other things are addressed, then I think we absolutely, similar to the take on the middle school, right? Much nicer facilities, the rate needs to reflect that. I think that's the time to make more of a move there. That's my opinion. Of course, it's the.
No, that's, that's what I was thinking, wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our second opportunity for comments from members of the community. Anybody in the media center, come on down. And simultaneously, if there's anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak, raise your hand. Okay, we're now at comments from the board. If anybody has additional comments that they didn't get a chance to share out. Mr. Meyer, go ahead.
All right, colleagues, I think for some of you in your, this is your second-to-last meeting. And not trying to again, decipher what might happen in an election either. Sorry, colleagues. But I just want to know that I think, appreciate everybody's constructive engagement. And I think we all believe that we're here to do good work for our district's children and we don't question that. And I think we don't have public disagreements. And if you look around the state, you see a lot of boards that are dysfunctional, unfortunately, and that's not the case with us. So I appreciate you all for all of that. Second, I just want to note that, you know, there was a UVA donating or leasing for a dollar, the Oaklawn property to the city. I think that's interesting. I appreciate that. I do not think that's equal to the FEI building. And I want to keep, you know, I hope we keep that in mind. In my mind, you know, UVA still didn't, us a very big disservice by how they acted around the FEI building and the, you know, more or less donation of Oaklawn property to us is not equivalent. And we still need to have, I think, a broader conversation with them and how they support our school system and the city in general. Second, I mentioned, sorry, the Summit Elementary School pickup and drop-off issues. I think this dovetail with Mr. Hartline. We still have some issues, I think, in some schools. And I think like to get a report maybe in the future about, you know, how do we decide if we need to speed cameras to some of these things? And/or how the police department is working with our school staff to help ensure safety, especially with, again, Summit, it's just a tricky situation. I know a lot of people are working on it, but it is still not working according to parent reports. Finally, I want to thank the, the parents that have gone together and the joint PTO fund. Again, this happened a couple of years ago. Great to see it happen. And I look forward to hopefully seeing its success. It's a great way for a lot of different stakeholders in our community to engage and keep our parents engaged. And finally, colleagues, just a quick report out, and I think it was an important update from our joint CIP meeting with the city councilors the other day, that city staff will be putting together a medium-long-term infrastructure plan. I think this is important. We'll not jinx it this year hopefully, but if the General Assembly were to pass a sales tax increase, that the ability to have a referendum on that, that we would have a plan that we could then take to the community promptly in the fall of 2026. So I think I really appreciate our city's colleagues thinking about that and getting that in place hopefully for early 2026. Thank you.
Well, I want to say a couple of things, but I think the main thing, because I'm ready to go home, is, you know, there's been a lot of political violence lately and I just, just simply want to denounce that. I, I think it's very important for us as elected officials, as well as community members, to ensure that we are having proper conversations and discourse with each other. I, I think it's just really important that in all aspects, whether it's community violence, black-on-black crime, whatever, whatever it is, like I think like we need to love each other and I think that's really, really important. I know in different situations, I mean, honestly, in any situation that someone is trying to commit some type of violence towards a person, like, you know, at, at that moment, you might need to take, find some help for yourself. So I encourage those that, you know, might be struggling with the political climate or struggling with, you know, a neighbor or whatever it is, to, you know, go seek help for yourself. And not just for yourself because you want to harm that person, but even for yourself as well. I, I think just overall, it's really, really important for us as a board, as Chris kind of mentioned, like as a board, continue to have positive conversations with each other. That doesn't mean that we can't be real and state our actual opinion, but just being respectful of each other is greatly appreciated. And I think generally I appreciate it in the Charlottesville area. So I just, you know, with state and federal stuff, I think sometimes we can get caught up in those emotions. And I just want to say for the, the whole community is to, you know, just understand that, you know, we're still people. At the end of the day, we're still people. And generally speaking, we all, you know, have the same goal. Just how do we get there is different. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Cooper? So I had a couple of comments. One of the comments was in reference to, we had a SRO conversation at Kendallwood yesterday. And so when we have community conversations or interacting with the community, we have to be mindful of the community that we are serving. And so, you know, if we are in a community that we know, you know, need an interpreter, we need to make sure that we have folks there to service the community. we need to make sure that we have folks there to service the community so that everyone is getting the information and they understand what's happening. And so again, when we are planning these community meetings, I don't know if it's like a checklist or something that we need to put together to making sure that we're checking off the boxes so that all of the needs of the community is met. And so I wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to talk a little bit about that I didn't really mention is when I was in some of the older schools, upgrades. And so I would like to know, like, where are we with some of those upgrades? I was able to see some of the classrooms that weren't utilized. And so if those classrooms aren't utilized, why aren't we taking the time to upgrade those classrooms where nobody is in them? If the goal is to bring fifth grade back to elementary, if those are little things that we can be doing throughout the year while school is in session, I think that we need to look at that and see how we get some of those things done. And just like, you know, in conversations with city council, when you go from Charlottesville Middle School to some of the older schools, you just realize like the air quality and stuff like that. And so being mindful that when we have a school that's a hundred years old. And then we have like these brand new schools, we need to invest in the schools that are a lot older so that we making sure that our kids not only get a quality education, but they're breathing in healthy air while they're in our school system. And then one of the things too is like, you know, we know some of our schools are dealing with big emotions, children with big emotions. And so making sure that we are supporting those schools and making sure that we, you know, if in budget session, if we need to advocate for more funding to have someone to do that, just that work, that that's what we do, but we are supporting those schools and checking in and making sure that things are going well. And how can we support you? Because that work can be hard and can be challenging. And also I, I kind of wanted to highlight on just some of the feedback that I've been hearing from the community because I am, I work in the community. I'm hearing a lot of parents saying that they don't feel supported with their child's individual education plan. And so I want us to be, you know, engaged with our families and being able to work with our families. Some of our families don't understand that language. And so being able to break it down for our families to be able to understand and, and listening to their feedback and what they need. Because if it's their children, nine times out of ten, they know what's best for their children. And so making sure that they feel a part of that process. Because I've heard this conversation from about four to five different people. And so just kind of being mindful of how we have those conversations, who's in the room and how we are facilitating those conversations so that parents feel like they're getting what they need for their children. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Additional comments? Ms. Torres?
So Ms. Cooper, I want to make sure you know, hopefully you know. But we do have the special ed advisory committee, so please, please refer them to somebody on that committee. And or, it's kind of why I'm sitting here. So I mean, I, I would always be another ear, you know, to kind of help guide them, but that's important. And so thank you for, for receiving that feedback from families. Some of you already said it, but I, I too was really excited to hear about the citywide PTO. So I'm excited to, to hear more and see how we can support them because I think that's a great, a great move that the PTOs, the joint group is doing. So thank you for that. Another little shout out to the, the tennis athletes and the back-to-back state champs. I also wanted to just take a minute. I think maybe we all got some, but we got some postcards from community members that were just reaching out to share their concern and to talk a little bit about budget, budget priorities. And then specifically how it, it may have impacted funding for the SROs, but that's been discussed. But I wanted, if anybody's listening, wanted to say thank you to the community members for reaching out and taking the time to write postcards. There was one more thing I wanted to say. Oh, November fourth, please, everybody, go out and vote. It's election day. So we got a big statewide election and just remember to do that, please. And thank you, Dr. Gurley, for everything. Appreciate you.
I had the opportunity to give the greetings this morning for Chesbra. That is the school, school communications, uh, school community, school communicator, school communicators organization. And it is comprised of school communicators from DC, Maryland, Virginia, and West Virginia. And so they are holding their conference here and Ms. Chuck and Ms. Corman are doing some presentations there. And I, I mentioned them because people are watching Charlottesville City Schools. And, you know, a lot of wonderful things happen here. And I think that people are intrigued about how we navigate very difficult spaces. And, and so I say that to thank each board member for the work that you do because I think it shows that people are watching, that, you know, you're listening to the community, that you and trust me to do what's right on behalf of our children. And, and so I just, and, and so we often get asked a lot of hard questions about how we can help them through some of their more challenging situations. So I just wanted to give you all kudos that people are watching us and giving us high fives. And I also want to just acknowledge Jessica Brantley. She was also on the personnel report today and the board approved her appointment. She will serve as the professional learning coordinator. So we will take a little bit off of that, trim a little bit off of that job and Dr. Isley will keep some of it. But she will be onboarded as the professional learning coordinator. And I think it comes at a very good time where she gets to do the work along, alongside someone who currently does it. Instead of most times, people get hired in August, in July and they're right in the thick of it. So really excited about, you know, she's on the team, but keeping her on the team and in another role. And she'll continue to support health and physical education as we continue to navigate the rest of the school year. And the nine weeks is getting ready to end. And I have just had a wonderful time being in and out of our schools. And our students continue to amaze me. Again, the conversations we have with our students today in the cafeteria, the conversations I've had with elementary children on the playground, with our parents at the grocery store, out at games. And we have a wonderful community and our families. I don't let people say that our families don't show up for our children because they do. All families, all families, regardless of social economic status, all families show up for their children in some way. And I appreciate the work that they do and I appreciate when they reach out to me. So that's it.
Anything, Ms. Swift, for work session wrap-up? Okay, we do have several upcoming meetings. One is two weeks from today. Folks will have a really hard decision about coming to our school board work session or the Random Row event with the citywide PTO. But maybe you can do both. So we have a work session starting at four that will then transition into our meeting with legislators thereafter. Thursday, November sixth, we're back here for another school board meeting. And then we're taking the show on the road, November eighteenth through twenty-first, heading to the VESBA annual convention. And I lost my agenda. Is that it? So and with that, we are adjourned.